Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave O'Donnell.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wensel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to ask Vince Strapkowski to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First item on the agenda tonight is our Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the amended order of business May 14, 2019, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Constant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Minutes. The first we have is minutes from the regular meeting of April 9, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Approve, I move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of April 9, 2019, as submitted.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under Approval of Minutes, we have minutes from the special meeting of May 9, 2019. They are available at the front table if anybody needs a copy.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Adella.
I move that we approve the minutes from the special meeting of May 9, 2019, distributed as special meeting as outlined in Item 4A.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items. First, we have the 2019-2020 Corporate Fund Budget Public Hearing. At this time, I need to make a motion to open a public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve opening public hearing for 2019-2020 Corporate Fund Ba, but, excuse me, Budget, as submitted on 5A.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Bazey. At this time, does anyone in the audience, the public, have comments on our budget for Please step up to the microphone, state your name, address, and limit it to three minutes, please.
You need to take a vote, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we will open it up. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Frida Berry. I live on Dock Stater. Mr. Mayor knows me very well. If we're going to see a budget, we'd like to actually see that. Is that anywhere where it's going to be posted? The reason why we want to know is because there's been a lot of insinuations or reports of missing funds within the city. There's a check floating around that was payable to Tommy Berry when Tommy Berry was a city councilman in the amount of $53,000, which is not, from our standpoints, the residents, it's not justified. It was for a flood. All of us have flood damage. None of us received any money, anywhere near $53,000. We went to FAMLA. We went to our insurance companies. We went to the city. The city turned us down. So here, a city councilman gets a payment of $53,000 for flood damage when no one else in the city got that. So if there's going to be a budget out there, I think it should be looked at and approved by the residents. There'd be someplace that we should see that. Also, any expenses paid, the residents should be able to see what those expenses are. We should see those major payments of funding that goes out there. The other thing was the forensic audit. We should also have to say, and that forensic audit, because one needs to be done. There's obviously rumors of corruption in the city of Dearborn Heights. We, as residents, as tax, Dock Stater pays the most taxes than anywhere else. All of the residents in Dearborn Heights pay a ton of taxes. We pay more taxes in Dearborn Heights than they do in Dearborn. So we should understand what is happening to that money and where is it going. Another thing that we're asking for is all of these special variances that are getting approved by the zoning committee, until this forensic audit is done, any special variance that was given for any building to be done, any construction, any new construction, any additions, any renovations, should be put on hold because, again, these special variances that the city all of a sudden doesn't care about what the ordinances are, they're just going free-for-all, you just come and you, whatever you want to do, we're the city of Dearborn Heights, we don't care what happens to the residents. Put a stop to all of those new construction, additions, anything that they have out there that was given a special variance needs to be halted until this forensic audit is done. Done. We're done. We're tired. A lot of us, you go down Dock Stater, there's five houses up for sale. Why? Because we're tired of it. Each and every one, to Dock Stater, no one would sell a house in a second. We're all tired of it. They want to build a car wash. Our basements are flooding enough as it is. You guys, please, forensic audit, approve it. Stop any variances that were given by the zoning board. We all know what's going on with the zoning board. We all know what's, what happened with the building inspector, the building division guy. We need to just stop. There is, the city has to take control of the city again. One person cannot say what is done. It has to be the whole team of you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? We do have a couple in, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Dana Parrish, 5614 Greenly Park. Couple of things. If the council decides to, in some of the areas I watched on the budget, some department heads did ask for raises. Now, if those raises are given, you need to strongly consider that you're going to give department heads raises, they need to work five days a week. No four days a week. Can't be. Can't be. You can't work, you can't get $80,000 a year in a city where the residents, the median income is, is $24,000, $27,000 a year and pay a department head $80,000 a year and let him work or her work four days a week. That's ludicrous. Absolutely ludicrous. Also, the job descriptions for these department heads, and I looked at every job description in the city, they don't support $80,000 a year. I've heard references to, well, other cities, they're paying $120,000 a year for these positions. I'm not saying these people aren't worth it. Many of these people are probably worth a lot more. But the job descriptions, which define what a person's job actually is, don't define, do not describe that position whatsoever. These job descriptions, many of them haven't been refined since 1991. Their latest is 2001. And there's a couple of department heads that don't even have job descriptions. How can you have a city run in this, in 2019, and not have a job description for a department head? It's ridiculous. You're asking $80,000 and above for, for a position, and you don't even have a job description for that? You can't even hold that person accountable. Why do residents have to pay to see those job descriptions, by the way? We have to pay to see those descriptions. We can't come down and say, hey, can I look at the job description for city clerk or for dishwasher or whatever? You have to do a FOIA request, which means you have to pay for every single document and every single time the person, all their time, to go do it. They're not free. They're not published online and available online. Why is that? Every other city around, they are. I don't understand that. It's ridiculous. What are we hiding?
Thank you. Any other? We do have an email from a resident, and I'll read. It said, "To Dearborn Heights City Council, regards to city budget 2019-2020, I would like you to consider the following suggestions. My suggestions are in the form of consolidating, consolidation of departments. First would be to combine the cable department with the library since it is educational and community program, or perhaps combine the cable department with the recreation department where it would best suit community involvement. Second suggestion would be to return our ordinance department back under the supervision of the police department again. Eliminate the involvement of a director in opting for a supervisor under the direction of the chief or captain, which brings up the thought of a combined police and fire department to be replaced with a public safety department. Also have the emergency manager duties done with a supervising captain. Third, that would be the DPW, as it looks, there are very few building and maintenance employees left, roughly six. How can six maintenance employees handle 11 buildings plus cutting grass? Let's remove the grass cutting and contract it out. Perhaps our buildings would look better and be in better shape. Fourth, let's consider the possibility of a city manager in lieu of a mayor. I believe we would save enough money to keep our public safety dispatcher." Thank you for your time.
Did you have a name and address for that person?
Um, all they signed it as is Vince. Is there any other comment? This time, Mr. Clerk, we move to close the open meeting, I mean, open the public hearing in regards to...
Need a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close.
Support. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have minutes from the special me, I'm sorry, we have River Oaks Old Orchard Pond Restoration Special Assessment. This is also a public hearing, so I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open.
Support. Okay. Councilman Bazey opens it. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, at this time, we open it up to public comment for questions and comments in favor of or opposition of the River Oaks Old Orchard Pond Restoration. Please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brahim Jawad. I'm from 20671 Williamsburg Road at the River Oaks Division. We had the meeting with the association last week, and they explained to us what is being planned for the fund. But it's still not clear exactly with the funds that the city is paying and we are paying, for how long are we guaranteed that we're not going to be hit again frequently for requests for more funds to do more work? How long is this work guaranteed? And what other things we should expect in the future when this job is completed? For how long is it going to last?
I would recommend that Mr. Brooks answer these kind of questions.
Mr. Brooks, would you like to come to the microphone and answer the resident?
And also, Mark, wherever you are, with some of the questions he deals with.
All right. The, the pond restoration is, is designed so there is a forbay that will collect sediment. And it was agreed as part of the project that the association will maintain the forbay. And approximately every five to 10 years, they have to remove the sediment from the forbay. And the association was going to pick, was going to develop a maintenance fund to do that.
So the current funds that are required from the River Oaks Division residents, every five to 10 years, we're going to be hit with more?
No. It's, it's, association has, has promised that they would maintain the, the pond once we did the restoration.
And how much would that, you expect to cost, the regular maintenance?
To, to dredge out the pond, it'd probably be anywhere from $5,000 to $5,000 to $15,000.
Every five to 10 years?
Approximately, yes.
All right.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Madam Chair, it's not about this, but I wanted to ask, are you going to ask questions on the agenda?
I will. Yep, I know, it's not on here. I just noticed it, so I added my own C.
Maya Habib, 20530 River Oaks Drive. Also, I agree with the neighbor that just went up ahead. I need, I mean, we need, as, as neighbors, to understand, is there any representation from the company that's taking on the project that we can ask question of? Because the, the letter that we received says an average cost per unit. So usually, average means plus or minus. And that could change once the project actually starts and they go into the project. So is there anyone from the company representing the company today here?
No.
No?
We don't, but we've already gotten the bids in, so the bids are firm.
Right, we've got the bids. It's, it's a unit-priced bid, so that the work that they do, they will get paid for the work they do. For instance, if they are to dredge, in the bid, we have like 1,200 cubic yards of material to be dredged. If they, if, if we only dredge 1,000, they'll get paid for 1,000. The 200, they won't get paid for. So...
Okay, but typically, in construction projects, there's always hidden things that come up, especially when you're dealing with...
Right, there, there is a $30,000 contingency in that price. If that isn't, isn't spent, you won't be charged.
And that's strictly to drain the pond, then not, nothing to do with the, the house, nothing to do with the, the pool or the mosquito?
No, nothing to do with the clubhouse or the pool.
Okay. But I still would like to talk to someone from the company who's doing the project. If you can give me after the, the meeting, a contact number, please, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment on the River Oaks Old Orchard Pond Restoration Special Assessment? Come up to the microphone, tell us your name and address.
Jeff Hamood, 20348 Williamsburg Road. Just want to let you know, thank you very much, first of all, for taking us for the, about this project and the mayor as well. We've been talking about it for the last three to five years and, you know, endless meetings with Rick over here. And, you know, we handed out flyers all over the subdivision, and just a limited number actually showed up. Literally, I can remember like the last eight, nine meetings that we discussed all the stuff. So probably like, you know, neighbors did not get it in time, you know? They can come and ask, Rick, and I'm sure they have the right to do anything. But I'm fully forward and with that project. We need to get rid of that mosquitoes. We need to actually enjoy our backyards, you know, that we used to like five, six years ago. And it's, it's a mess. So thank you very much, guys, for, for supporting us on this.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Did you have? Go ahead, please.
Hi, Samira Kadri. I am the attorney for the association. There was one issue we would like to bring to your attention, something that was in the agreement that was originally signed, that we would like to have amended. And I've already discussed this with our corporation counsel. In, in this, hopefully, will ease some of the burden on maybe some of the residents that are living on a fixed income, most of which are retirees. Further, at a, the association meeting that was just mentioned a week ago, we brought this to the residents, and everyone was in agreement that was in attendance. One of this parts in the agreement was that the duration for the special assessment would be for 10 years. So I believe the final number came down to $1,400 per resident, which would be $140 a year per resident. What we'd like to do is we'd like to stretch that over 15 years, so it eases the burden to about $93 per resident over a 15-year period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I had a question from the attorney, but you were in favor of, could you repeat that real quickly? You were in favor of the...
Changing Section 2 of the agreement from 10 years for the special assessment to a 15-year period.
Okay. The administration has no objections to that if the council was willing to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Adella.
Well, I just, I just wanted to ask, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name, the young lady. You said the majority of the people that showed up to that meeting said they'd do it, they would prefer the 15 years?
Everyone that showed up to the meeting agreed to 15 years. We had approximately 50 residents that showed up that day, and everyone was in favor of the 15 years.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion at this time?
Council Chair, if, um, Mr. Roberts...
May I make one point?
Go ahead, sir.
I believe there was a, a proposed resolution included in your packet.
Yes.
In discussion, after that resolution was prepared with the city treasurer and with other attorneys in our office, I would suggest one change. That would be the, the due date, I believe in your packet is reflected as June 15 on Page 3, Paragraph 4. This is the paid and full date.
Yep, June 15.
What agenda number is this?
It's the attachment to Item 5B.
5B, okay. Gotcha.
So it's on Page 3, Item 4. It should be June 15?
It, it should be, instead of June 15, June 7 will expedite the, the billing.
Council, Council Chair, if I may ask a question.
Council, okay, Mikey.
Yes. Mr. Roberts, is there going to be any problem if they go to the 15-year?
I, I actually, if the council prefers and wants to approve a 15-year, I do have a proposed resolution to that effect. I could present to council tonight.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat's next, then.
Do we, do we need to vote on this today?
Yeah.
And make a motion to accept this, correct?
Yeah. And then what I would do is, if you have the new resolutions or, or indicate the 15 years rather than 10? Yeah, if we can probably get a copy of that, then we can reference that with the 15-year assessment.
Thank you, sir.
The one thing I would...
That's the one copy he has.
I apologize for interrupting, but if you do want to go to the 15-year, it would be appropriate to do, after the close of the public hearing, to do a motion to approve the resolution contingent upon the assessment role being recalculated for the 15 years opposed to the 10-year. The actual assessment role that was presented with the resolution tonight is for a 10-year resol, or 10-year assessment period. If it's going to be 15-year, it's going to drop it, I believe it was right around $98 a year instead of the $147. So that would have to be redone, but that's an administrative matter that can be handled.
Thank you.
I don't need this, especially the clerk should end. Pass it down to the clerk.
So that would be under 11 as a resolution, then, right?
It's right after the closing of this.
After you close the public hearing, Madam Chair, then you can vote on the resolution.
All right. At this point, do we have any further comment from the public? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name's Salim Sabar, representing Blum &amp; Hooker Lounge down the street.
Oh, no, this is...
Everybody knows the place now.
This is in regards to River Oaks Old Orchard Pond only right now. There is another part that you can come up, but it's later.
In a few minutes.
We'll let, we'll let you know in a minute.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, this is for River Oaks Old Orchard Pond Restoration, the special assessment. Any further comment from the audience in regards to that particular subdivision? Okay, I motion to close?
Motion to close.
Support. Bazey, Councilman Bazey. Motion to close. Councilman Muscat supports it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need to present the resolution.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move city council approve the special assessment for the River Oaks Pond with a change for the assessment to roll back to 15 years from 10 as outlined in 5B.
Motion. Councilwoman Hicks, second the motion. Is there any...
There was one more thing you wanted.
And, and, and change of the due date to June 7.
Yes.
Support.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I believe the motion should also refer back to the assessor for a recalculation.
Right. Lisa, please.
I think I thought I said that with the...
Yes. 5B covers that, I think. We're in order here.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At least I thought I said it. Let's put it down.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I'm going to have public hearing and comment on agenda items. These are items on this particular agenda right now we have in front of us. Come to the microphone, state your name, address, and you have two minutes for this section. Okay, at this point?
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Dana Parrish, 5614 Greenly Park. Item 7C, approval of two street sweepers. The thing that I have a question on is those two street sweepers to be purchased. I know the street sweepers need to be replaced, they're old, but the financing should not be through the water department. I've done a considerable amount of research. I don't know any other city in the area that finances their, their street sweepers by the water department. It's done through DPW, not through the water department. Next would be 9J and 9K. 9J is another water department purchase. It's a hydro cedar with hose rail. I don't know what that, what that has to do with the water department. I don't know what, why we need a hydro cedar for the water department. I don't know why they need grass in the water, but obviously we do. And the last, in Item 9K, is caterpillar with backhoe. And that's also to be purchased through the water department fund.
Council Chair.
Now, that may be...
Respond.
That, that may be used by the water department, but if that's going to be used by the water department and purchased by the water department, it should be for exclusive use of the water department. I, I know by my own experience that a backhoe and a, a backhoe and a bolt hoser is usually used by more than just the water department. So it should be a co-mingled use by DPW and water department at the very least.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment on agenda-only items? Name, address, and you have three minutes.
Frida Berry, 26354 Dock Stater. I have, I'm Item 6, fund transfer. When looking at the list and the reports that you guys are doing, there's a lot paid to Wade Trim. I strongly, strongly recommend that you guys look at Wade Trim and the processes that they've done over the past few years. I strongly look and suggest that you guys look at the zoning board and the special variances that have been given. For some reason, Ray Trump walks in here one day with a zoning board, finds all these issues with what they're going to do. A month later, miraculously, they're saying, no, there are no issues, we're fine, and the zoning board approves. So that needs to be looked at. Another thing, there's money, a ton of money paid to pipe tech for the, looking at the grease traps. Our basements flood still. The grease traps are not being checked. I called the city multiple times, and they tell me, it's me, it's not them. How is it that my base, my piping, my PVC piping, my, all the way back to the back, 300 feet back, has all been replaced and it's still my fault? I don't think so. My, my neighbor and next to them, all of our homes flood at the same time. It cannot be me. I'm asking you to look at that contract, I'm asking you to look at the Wade Trim contract. Any variances that have been given by the zoning board based on recommendations by Wade Trim need to be halted. Halted. Dave, I'm sorry, no offense. He, he went in front of the zoning board, told the zoning board that he is a member of city council, and he sits on the board of the mosque, and told them to vote yes, yes, on a, on what they were doing, the addition that they were doing. You cannot do that. I am asking that when you guys are looking at all of these items, you guys look at the legalities. Take back our city. Enough is enough, okay? We're done with it. City council cannot go in front of the zoning board and tell the zoning board to vote yes on something that he has interest in. He cannot do that. And your lawyer was there, front and center. He heard the entire conversation. We, as residents, we have a right. We have a right. You cannot add 5,000 square feet, this is my Wade Trim issue. You cannot add 5,000 square feet to a building on Ford Road, to that mosque, and tell them that they need no additional parking, knowing that all of those people that are going to the mosque are parking on our residential streets. Knowing that they are putting my kids at risk. My daughter almost got hit by a car. My other daughter got bombarded by people from there. You guys need to look at Wade Trim. Look at Wade Trim. Look at what you're spending on the grease traps, on the water places. Look at all of these convenient contracts that are paid. That funding should not go out unless you guys look and see what they're doing.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on agenda?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
No, is this on an agenda item?
Well, I just wanted for clarification.
No, no, we don't respond on this part, remember?
Oh, it's not the zoning board, though?
I'm sorry, Director McIntyre, we can't. None of us can respond. We can only listen at this point. Is there any other comments?
Oh, sorry, it was the planning commission, not the zoning board. The planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other comments on agenda item only? If there is, you come to the microphone and state your name and address. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on. Next, on the agenda, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we approve fund transfers and current claims, numbers 6-1 all the way to 680... I've got so many papers here.
87.
687, as submitted on today's day.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I have two items I'd like to have some clarification. The first one is on 635 from the water department for best asphalt. And it's for the milling, asphalt and milling. So why would water pay for that?
Director Selmy?
Which should be highway, should it not be, or...
Yeah, you're correct. That was, I noticed that this morning or later on this afternoon, so we can make the adjustment. It was charged to the wrong account.
Yeah, if...
That should be highway. You're correct. That was for the milling on Cherry Hill.
Yeah, and when we do that, I'd like to have backup to make sure that's been changed, please.
Sure.
Thank you. The second one I have is 6-60, National Business Furniture, $1,700 to Kehoe, Credenza, and Hutch. I don't know what this is or where it goes or who's using it, but it looks like a pretty expensive desk to me.
Deputy Director Coniston, would you like to comment on that one?
That desk was actually for an employee at the Eaton Center who does the trip paperwork. She hasn't had a desk at all, other than this little metal thing, and the credenza is to go behind her. The doorway in that desk is, or in that office is really, really small. So because of that, we had to go with a special measurement to get it in the doorway. But it will last because we went with all wood. Before, we had pressed wood, pressed board, and it goes really fast, and then that ruins all your clothes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on agenda items? Okay. Madam Chair. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Real quick, because I do have concern that what the resident has shared in particular, I think it's council body, these items aren't here. Yes, we should pay them with Pipe Tech and of course Wade Trim, but I think there should be consideration. We need to talk about maybe scheduling some time to discuss that, in my opinion.
We can have a study session.
Right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
One more, you know, we did have a gentleman, a resident, come up and voices opinion on the street sweepers and the hydrocedar. I believe the hydrocedar will save us money for sod. Instead of laying sod, they would hydrocede the areas where they have to dig up to repair water mains. So that, I believe, is the intention for that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Director.
Director Selmy?
Yes, the hydrocedar is a more effective, efficient way to do restoration and water department having over 200 to 250 water main breaks a year, digging up catch basins, sinkholes, and all those types of things. This is a much more effective way to do that landscaping. Also, this is a piece of equipment that's a 20-year purchase, so it's not a one-year purchase and you're done with it. And it's a much more effective way to grow grass from seed.
And as far as the street sweepers, I do believe we did discuss that at one time, Mr. Mayor. If, correct me if I'm wrong, and street sweeping was mandated by the state for the maintenance of our sewers and things of that nature. So that's why that would be coming from that fund.
That is correct. There is something called, I don't remember the acronym, what it stands for, I should say, but it's a sweepie. And it was mandated by DEQ that, and we agreed to do so many sweeps of the street in order to maintain, keep things out of the sanitary and, I should say, the storm sores.
Believe me, I would have been, I would have been all over that. I was all over that, by the way, when we first, and we did look it up and we did have a meeting on that, and that's, and it's there in black and white, so I can't argue that point.
Thank you. Any further... Councilman Bazey?
On item 643, there's a grievance on there. I'd like to, I don't know if we're going to discuss it here, but I'd like to find out what those grievances are on 643, on their labor matters. Also, there's a few items in here about a wall. I don't know which wall they're talking about. It was, I don't know if it's, if we need to discuss that here. There's a, actually, there's a few items regarding the wall. There's a lot of money.
Would that be a closed meeting, or can we discuss that publicly, Mayor?
Is this, I'm sorry, is this litigation?
It was, it was a grievance originally that went to arbitration.
And that should be handled in a closed session.
Well, we need to schedule a closed session again to go over these grievances and also the wall. And there was a couple of other items. I don't want to embarrass another council members. There's some in here as well, so we'll move on, I guess.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I just want to go back to the hydrocedar. This picture that we have, was given to us, is that the machine?
Director Selmy?
Yes. The backup information in your packet is the machine that we will be purchasing if the council approves it.
That's a pretty massive machine there.
It's only 750 gallons. That's one of their smaller models.
Now, you're using this for water main break repair. I mean, probably 15-foot square. I've seen these used before where it's operated from above on a little platform. How accurate is that? I mean, you're squirting down.
It has a hose rail, much like a hose rail on a fire truck. So you can pinpoint what you spray, or you can do a vast area. That small machine there will do 4.3 acres on a load, 750 gallons.
Do you normally do, do you normally sod that much at a time, or do we have to have this big of a machine?
That's the smallest machine they have.
That's the smallest they have? Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion on fund transfers and current claims? Okay, at this point, we will take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have consideration of bids. Human Resources Director Sabota Perry, proposal award recommendation, employee benefit consulting services.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we move, I'm sorry, I move that we concur, I'm sorry, with Director Sabota Perry, requesting mayoral concurrence and the city's council approval to continue our contractual relationship with Plant Moran Group Benefit Advisors, PM Group Benefit Advisors. This will provide the city of Dearborn Heights continuity and level of service the employees and retirees expect, and this is as outlined in item 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
So I reviewed this here. I spent a lot of time on this. I don't know if we should name company names, however, the one that we just chose is actually not the best or cheapest company. There's three other companies in here, which is less than half, and these companies are actually doing business with bigger cities than us. So I don't know why we chose that entity with more than double sometimes, one of its three times the price. And yeah, one entity is actually a big city like Livonia and Arbor, so it doesn't make sense to me.
You could name it. It's public record, right?
Well, Cornerstone, it says reference, they deal with Chesterfield, West Boonefield, Sterling Heights. Another company deals with Adrian, Celine Schools, Southgate Schools. There's one, one of them is Livonia, Romulus, and Ann Arbor. And again, that's less than half the price. There's another company that deals with Warren, Roseville, and River Rouge. So I don't know why we chose that entity with more than three times the price.
Director Sabota Perry, would you like to answer that, please?
Sure, thank you. So as the cover letter indicates, the difference between the companies that are in gray and the companies that are not highlighted, the companies in gray are companies that operate as an agent of record in general. So, city of Livonia, for instance, that company will receive compensation based on their commission on their healthcare premiums. The city of Dearborn Heights, we had a similar arrangement many years ago. It did not go in the favor of the city of Dearborn Heights and certainly not the city employees. So we are a self-insured plan. So Plant Moran is the company that we have used. There's two companies that have dealt similar to Plant Moran without being an agent of record. So it's a flat fee. They're not insurance brokers where they're not selling additional products and trying to make money off of premiums that maybe would not enhance our employees' bottom line. So someone pays for it, one way or another. This is a full, flat fee. This is exactly what you get. They're not making any additional money beyond it, and they're not licensed to sell things beyond what the scope of the plan is.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
As I said, I still have an issue with, I mean, with the entity that was chosen. And the reason why is because they do our audit, and now we're choosing them for something else. So if we're going to use them for audit, you know, why are we using them for different things like this one, for example? So I guess what I'd like to see is a letter from that entity to say that there's no conflict of interest. If there is, then we need to put the audit for, the city audit to another company to rebid on it.
We'd be more than happy if I threw the chair to get, the audit division is separate from this healthcare entity, and we'd be, if you want to make the motion including a letter, we certainly will get such a letter. We had Cornerstone years ago, and we found out, and that's why the items in gray, is that they were charging us fees that we did not know about, and it was not the transparency for, I don't particularly care for that word, but, because I think it's too general. But what they were doing is, as we were buying as a city insurance, we found out Cornerstone was getting premiums that we did not know we were paying. And that's why we would prefer to know upfront exactly what we're going to get charged and not get charged anymore. And if there is another charge, then they have to come back. And these items in gray, I equate it to, if you go in and you have someone working on your investments, if they're also selling investments, then they may look what gives them the highest percentage rather than what's best for the client. And we don't want to get into that kind of situation. So I really think Seagull and Plant Moran were the two that upfront operate where you don't get hit with these hidden fees, and that was why they were recommended.
Council Chair, if I may.
Is there, council, it's what, it's would direct, what would you be adding that the director wouldn't be adding?
I think I was going to clarify something, because I don't know that this is clear. Essentially, they get paid, if I can be, if the mayor and director could correct me if I'm wrong, but they get paid by the actual company, and those fees are hidden from you. And then they get passed on in costs to the city. So essentially, the idea is, is that you work with someone and you know exactly what you're dealing with, instead of they sell, you know, it's only going to be $25,000, and then all of a sudden it gets baked in because they get paid by the insurance company, and then the insurance company ends up basically adding it to your cost of providing this type of coverage.
That's where the companies in gray.
Thank you. Councilman Abdullah?
I know with my conversation with Director Perry, one of the things that you mentioned to me that was most important to you guys was the fact that it was a consulting company. There was only two of them that were consulting companies.
Correct. 100% consulting. So there are other companies that, you know, submitted proposals, and recently, when we're in the middle of this process, on the news, there was a community that had used one of those groups, and those employees were seen at a city council meeting crying because their obligation out of their paycheck became so cost prohibitive, almost priced them right out of their jobs as city employees. That's what I'm trying to prevent, especially with Act 152, that our employees have to contribute a certain amount to their healthcare benefits.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? At this time, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. Next item under consideration of bids is Park &amp; Recreation Deputy Director Coniston, rebid award recommendation for two True Reach-in refrigerators.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Deputy Director Kim Coniston with the enclosed review of the rebid tabulations for the purchase of two True Reach-in refrigerators, model number T-49-HC. And at this point, she is recommending that we rebid the two refrigerators because she did not get any bids, and this is as outlined in item 7B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat?
Excuse me. It's actually not a rebid. This is the results from a rebid. So this is, this motion would be to approve the purchase of two Reach-in refrigerators.
Okay.
Thanks.
Can we amend that motion to purchase?
We're going to have to amend it to purchase and...
Councilman?
Okay, I amend it to purchase based on the rebid of the two True Reach-in refrigerators as outlined in item 7B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Treasurer Riley, approval of two street sweepers financing bid and resolution.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move city council approve the attached resolution authorizing installment purchase agreement drafted by Patrick F. McGow of Miller Canfield, approving the terms and condition of the lower bidder, BB&amp;T, for two street sweepers as outlined in 7C. Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy and Ordnance Enforcement and Animal Control Director McIntyre.
I had my hand up for a question concerning that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just curious when they expect delivery of the street sweepers.
Actually, I believe we're going to be receiving one early next week and one the following week.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, okay. Let's move on. Under DPW Director Selmy and Ordnance Enforcement and Animal Control Director McIntyre, grassweed debris removal bid recommendation.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with John Selmy, Public Service Administrator, and Jack McIntyre, Director of Ordnance and Enforcement. Department of Public Works are requesting authorization from the city council to accept the bid from Artistic Lawn Service for grass weed and debris removal. And only four companies submitted bids. Artistic Lawn is not the lowest bid in all categories, according to the director, but is the lowest in debris holloway. And therefore, they are asking the city council to approve the contract with Artistic Lawn Service for the term of 2019 through 2023 and authorize the mayor to sign as outlined in item 7D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Wenzel. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I had a question for, I don't know who wants to answer this, John Selmy or... One of the things that you mentioned in here, that you said Artistic Lawn was not the lowest bid, but it's the lowest in debris holloway. And to me, it didn't look like it was the lowest in debris holloway, honestly. I know we received this email later, but the debris holloway for Artistic was, I know we have a lot of papers on this. I think off the top of my head, let's find it. It didn't seem like it was the lowest, is basically what I'm saying. Try to find the number.
One of the things that Director Selmy and I did, first of all, I appreciate this bid process because it gave us an opportunity to see what other companies do in their operations. Director Selmy and I went to visit all the sites of all the businesses, and we learned what they do and how they do it. There were a couple of companies that we didn't consider even of the four bids based
on references, the references that we got from other communities. We just kind of excluded them, so...
But my concern, as you mentioned, they were the lowest in debris holloway, and Artistic is at 7,000, whereas premium lawn...
No, that's not the holloway category. Holloway would be number five.
Forty, forty cubic, forty dollars per cubic yard versus fifty-five and forty-nine.
How much debris do we really remove? I think we cut grass more than we do debris. Is that correct?
So, the way it was, Proposal 1 is for residential square feet, the first 5,000. Proposal 2 is for any 100 square feet above the 5,000 square feet. The commercial N is number three proposal, that's for the first 200 square feet. Proposal 4 is for anything in addition to the square feet, based on 10 square feet. Proposal 5 is the removal of debris, debris holloway. The bid that you were looking at had to do with the overall city cuts.
Councilman Bazey?
Okay, again, so I, I actually went and did a matrix. Artistic came in low on just one item, which is disposal, which is Proposal 5, removal of debris slash brush. Forty dollars per cubic yard versus the other two companies. One was 55, the other one's 49. So, the lowest was 40, then the next one is 49. However, the most that this company does is cut grass, and it's actually the highest in every category. For Proposal 1, it's not the cheapest. Proposal 2, it's definitely not the cheapest. Proposal 3, it's not. And Proposal 6, it's actually more than double the price by almost $7,000 per month. And also, this is ridiculous that we actually, you guys gotten these proposals back a month back, and now you guys decided to send us all these proposals the night before we're supposed to vote on it. And I seen the dates on here, they were received by you guys a month ago, and we received them last night. The other thing, I don't know who prepared the contract, I don't know if it's the company that actually is, did the bidding. I don't know why you guys specified what equipment or what brand of equipment that needs to be used. I didn't know the City of Dearborn Heights grass recommends certain equipment. And I did, we did some research, the top brands were excluded from this contract, which I don't, like I said, I have no idea. The most expensive brands, and I did call two separate companies in two separate municipalities, which they carried this brand, which they said they were excluded because they were using superior models, superior brands, but they were excluded because of the brand. And the brands that were chosen was less, they were inferior to the superior brand, which was, like, say, one of them is the X marks. And again, I have another problem with this, that you guys are issuing a five-year contract for this? I don't know why you're issuing a five-year contract for a lawn cutting service. So, I'm definitely going to vote no for this one, so...
Director Selmy, weren't we eventually going to try and do it in-house?
I'm not, I don't have that, I was, I didn't do that part of that bid, so, but as far as the city cut goes, I only speak to the city cuts. So, the one contractor gave us a price of $36 a cut to cut the city property along the river, incinerator, and some other parcels. I talked to one contractor, he said he could do it for $36 a cut. I talked to the current contractor doing that work, and he's told me that it takes him four days with six machines. So, that's where you get your variance. You want to go with a low bid at $36, that's fine, but I think you get what you pay for. So, it's just a recommendation, and you can do what you want with it.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I wanted to just say, first of all, Director McIntyre and our other, our DPW Director, thank you. I'm glad you appreciate the bid process, because I'm sure the council body also appreciates the bid process. It's fair. My concern are the same, and thank you, Councilman Bazey, for addressing those issues. My concern is that when I first received my packet Thursday night, the first thing I looked for was the backup, which was not there.
That's my fault. That was my mistake. I thought it was included.
So, that's just sake of transparency, because I don't know if our residents or anybody else has access to the email that we received, by the way, to see this. And that concerns me a little bit. It flags it for me. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just saying it raises a flag.
No, I definitely, it's my responsibility. I didn't include it, I thought I had, so...
And I guess my concern came in when I read the cover letter as well, about the clarifications and the discrepancies, because we're not part of that. And obviously, it's your responsibility too, because you're a part of the administration. But I think as, just as a council member, I appreciate that information too, and transparency to understand how you came to this conclusion, because right now, honestly, I'm not prepared to approve the bid because of those missing pieces. It's pretty flat.
If I can say one, if I can say one other thing. One of the things that we found frustrating, and I do mean that when I say I appreciate the bid process, it was a good experience. What we found with a couple of the folks that provided bids is, it didn't seem clear to me that they had ever done this type of work before, because the bids were, if you can see, the bids were kind of all over the place. One company came in so extremely low, is driving from the east side, it doesn't seem realistic to me that they're going to be able to, we've had companies like that before, that, one in fact, about five years ago, that came from the east side, and several days, we would find that they were doubling up on other days. So, if we write up a grass ordinance today, those officers would bring those into our office, they would go on a grass cut list, and eight days from now, so you get seven days to correct it, on the eighth day that grass is cut. And at that point, it probably really needs to be cut, because if it was six inches when we wrote it up, or more, seven days later, it could be 10 or 12 inches. So, what we were finding with some of these companies that were coming from far away, was that they would look at their list, and they'd say, well, I've only got nine to do on Tuesday, but I've got 14 to do on Wednesday. I'm going to do all of them on Wednesday. And that's not the way our program was set up. We needed them to be cut on the day that they were supposed to be cut. The one thing I would say, with this company, no doubt about it, for three years, I haven't had one single complaint. And when they started doing the city cuts as well, you can check with the DPW Director and the former one, not a single complaint about any city properties being cut. Many of you have often said that we should go with someone who's a local person. This is a local person. You know, he, he lives in Dearborn Heights, his kids go to Dearborn Heights schools, his mom runs Roberto's Bakery. I've definitely gotten to know him, because, you know, he's done such a fantastic job for us, so, based, I know he even helped, like, with the rain garden behind the, someone had contacted him, asked if he could come with help with that. He's available, you know, I can call him one day and say, I got a court order today, and he's there to help me with it the next day, so...
I guess, Director, my question is, why are you specifying, specifying exactly what equipment is necessary, and just, instead of just looking at the bid?
It's just something that we, I think parts of that I took from our old bid. We've always, I don't know that it's particular type or particular brands, but there are particular types of machinery that's going to be necessary. So, and we've said this before, we've had, we had one company one time where they thought they could do a lot of it with push mowers, you know? So, we have to require certain equipment to do certain jobs. They have to have dump trucks, because they're going to have a lot of holloway, and they can't, you know, we've had, we've had companies in the past that, you know, have brought in dumpsters and delivered them to streets. We can't have that either. They have to have all the, all the specialized equipment to do the job.
Understandable, but if they can't do the job, then we find someone else. I mean, we can't judge what they can or can't do in regards to the equipment they have. I mean, I don't know what makes certain equipment better than the others, because the other ones were higher-end, but they were excluded from the bid process because they had the better equipment. They could be, maybe do the job cheaper, because they could maybe do more.
Can I just ask a question? What do you, I'm not following excluded, because it was an open bid process, and to the best of my knowledge, no bids were rejected.
See, here it says models exclude X marks. That's a type of cutter.
And I didn't read the spec, so, but I don't, you know, I didn't know that anybody's bid was rejected. I was just trying to get some clarification.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with anybody that was rejected either. In fact, we, during our site visits, we went...
I would think if they had the equipment, they would think they were automatically excluded, not even try and put in a bid because of it.
We had a pre-bid meeting that we made that mandatory. We had several companies that came to the pre-bid meeting, but when they saw the scope of work, I know that a few of them didn't, ended up not submitting bids, not, it had nothing to do with equipment, it had to do with the volume of work, and the expectation that they were going to be required to be here five days a week doing grass cutting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council?
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I'm, I'm up in the air on this, and the only reason I'm up in the air is because, again, like everyone else, I received this with no backup, and then, lo and behold, I don't know if I'm, if it's required of me to check my email every hour or two to see if anything comes in, and I didn't see the email with those bids. Same on me. So, I apologize to everybody for not looking at my email, but I would think that everything that I'm going to vote on today should be in my packet.
Should be available to the public online, too.
Yes, and it should have been made available since it is public documentation. So, I feel maybe we should just hang on to this and go through this one more time.
Or rebid.
Yeah, all right.
That's my suggestion, whoever wants to make a motion of some sort.
I agree with that, too. All right, well, at this point, do we all...
Counsel Chair.
Before you...
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Director, one more thing I want to discuss, and it's kind of related to this. People are sometimes, and I've had some complaints about this, twice it's happened, but I just want to make sure and clarify it, because to me, it seems a little unfair, honestly. When, when somebody doesn't cut the grass, like, let's say, a church, or McDonald's, or whatever it happens to be, and they have a lot of hypothetically 200, or let's say 100 feet by, you know, whatever, 150 feet, when they're charged for the grass cutting, even though they have just a little bit of grass at the entrance of the particular business or entity, they're charged for the total amount of the lot.
No.
Remember, because there was an incident where...
Not commercial property.
Well, in that particular case, that particular one was a school, if you recall.
You're talking about the school on Beach Daily?
Right.
Part of that is because of the time spent in the holloway, there were some extra charges with that. But it's based on the square footage of the grass that they cut.
The grass area only.
On commercial, it's, the measurements are just of the grass areas. That's why, that's why...
Because at that time, if you recall, the charge was for the whole thing, that's the concern that I've got.
No, it definitely wasn't for the whole property. That had to do with, the, part of that is that they had a lot of debris holloway. If you remember, there was a lot of construction material, because they were on a construction, they had to relocate construction material to cut the grass. They couldn't cut it with mowers because of the fact that it was a construction site, there was a lot of uneven property, so they were doing, walking through with weed, weed whippers.
Okay. So, it's a fair, I just want to make sure it's a fair process.
Yeah, not with commercial property.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant?
Is there a reason why we would have a five-year contract to lock in that long?
You know what, I just went, I copied some other cities that were going out for a bid this year, and that's what they were doing, they were going out for five and, five-year bids. It's not, we can...
Counsel Chair.
So, is this in regard, see, this is...
Yeah.
Discussion for City Council and for the directors. You're here for legal opinion, if we asked you right.
Well, this pertains to the lack of a contract. So, basically, yes, it does have something to do with legal stuff. In other words, there isn't, doesn't appear to be a contract in the stuff that I just saw from the mayor, and if there's going to be an action taken to refer this back, or whatever it might be, then that would be something that should also be referred back over me.
There's no contract, yeah.
Because there's no contract.
Okay.
There was a motion made, correct?
Yes. Do we want to amend the motion?
I amend the motion to refer it back, do you want to do it to a study session, or do it to the next meeting?
Study session.
Do you really need a study session, honestly? I think we just need to have an opportunity to be able to look it over, so...
I need to go back and rebid.
Refer it back to the administration for...
Rebid and remove that brand...
Remove the exclusions of the certain brand names.
And reduce the contract, the five-year contract.
What would you like it reduced to?
A year by year.
A year.
A year?
That's why it is most, most cities.
Two years.
No, it's really...
You've got to go two or three.
Well, we don't have to go any more than one if we don't want.
I think, a part of the problem is, when do you go to one year?
If, this is such a large contract, that the contractors will have to make an investment in additional equipment. So, typically, that's why they do one or two years.
But this is, okay.
We also need to make sure that a contract is presented to Corporation Council and the mayor, because there isn't one here. So, I have referred back to Councilman Abdullah for his...
Okay, so, so you guys have thrown thirty things.
Go for it.
So, which one is it going to be? What's the official?
We'll just refer, refer it back to the administration.
Okay, but you guys want to do a study session? Or do you want to just have an opportunity to be able to read this over? Because I, we did get it late last night, so we didn't have a chance.
If I can say one more thing, the way it was explained to me is that whatever was approved here tonight, whoever was approved, then I would reach out to Mr. Miyake and ask him to put a contract together. That was the way I understood it.
We need to see...
But we're not ready to approve.
Right, and then he explained to me that the contract would have to then come back in front of you.
Right, but at this point, it seems like, at least from me, it seems like the body's not ready to approve it, so I don't know if we're ready to go to contract.
So, okay.
So, you guys want to go to a study session?
We'll refer it back to you for rebidding out with no exclusions on the equipment?
We can go up to, I mean, we can go up to two years.
Two years is fine, no more, let's say.
Well, so, in this case, I don't know if we need to do, basically, they could, they'd have to amend their bids.
We need, we need to go back, because, like I said, I've talked to a few companies that they were not, they did not go in the bidding process because they were, the equipment they were using was much superior, but they were excluded because of that equipment. So, I think it should go back for rebid and take the brand requirement, because I don't think our grass really demands certain type of brands.
It's not, it wasn't, everyone that's done municipal contracts before knows that it has to do with the equipment, not the brand.
Well, what we should have done was, in parentheses, if we wanted, and I don't even know what these companies named are, or equal.
Right.
Or better, or equal.
Because I went, the ones that were in the contract, I did a comparison, there's actually much better equipment with more warranty, more horsepower than the one that you guys had in the brand requirement. So, that was my, that was my issue.
So, Counsel Chair.
Okay. Councilman Abdullah?
So, based on that thought, can you change it? I mean, I see the councilman's concern about this particular brand. I mean, I don't know if we need, you know, company, brand X or brand Y, but can you maybe specify the type of equipment?
Yeah.
You know, so much horsepower, or so much size?
Without putting in a particular brand.
Because it just shows that we're picking a certain company because they have that equipment brand, that's it.
You should, just rebid.
Just rebid and let them come forward, and they should know what it entails.
Well, I'll be honest with you, that, that part of the bid, I don't even, you know, I'm not afraid to admit, I don't know nothing about lawnmowers. I don't know brands, saws, mowers, nothing. I took that from our last contract, so...
So, I guess I would leave it to the experts. They should know what is required to do a city our size, if they are going to get the bid.
Counsel Chair.
Corporate counsel?
Thank you. I would recommend that this be referred back to the administration to have it rebid, containing the additional changes that have been noted. And then, in that, I very well might be able to prepare some form agreement that would be able to, we could include it and make the whole process go smoothly.
Okay. All right. So, go ahead, amend it.
So, I'd like to amend my motion for Item 7D, to go out for rebid with a contract date not longer than two years, with the equipment specified as far as the type of equipment, not necessarily the brand name of the equipment, and then bring it back to the council for final approval and final contract revisions by council.
Support by Councilman Bazey? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, DPW Director Selmy, and, oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, yeah, DPW Director Selmy, Rebid Award Recommendation.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move City Council award a contract to Dearborn Tree Service. This contract will be effective 7/1/19 through 6/30/21, as outlined in 7E. be effective 7/1/19 through 6/30/21, as outlined in 7E. Dearborn Tree's been around a long time, it's a great, great company.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat, Madam Bazey?
Yeah, I know, I talked to the, we asked at the last meeting, Director, we asked if DPW had to do the work, and I don't see them as the fourth or even a third bidder. Was that looked at to see what it would take for DPW to do the same work?
Well, I don't know that we bid on an outside contract, but I think what you asked me is, in the future, is this something that we could take back in-house?
Yes.
And my response to you was yes, but we needed to get the equipment and the staff. In the 1920 budget, I'm asking for some more equipment to be able to do that, it was my understanding that there was a lag in tree service here, this contract had been in place, so it's a two-year contract, to give the time for the city to get employees, get the necessary equipment to take on, take over this task back from the contractors.
Okay.
Council Chair. Councilman Muscat?
We don't have the capability of cutting down a 200-foot tree, do we?
Well, no, I mean, within reason, I mean, we're going to still have to have somebody on board that can, you know, take down trees.
This would also cover that?
This also does cover large diameter trees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director, Deputy Director Coniston, advertise for bids for the new tile floor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, advertise for bids for the Canfield Community Center entrance doors and fund transfer.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, move to concur with Deputy Director for Parks and Recreation, Kim Coniston, and authorize the comptroller to advertise for bids for the replacement of the Canfield Community Center entrance doors, as outlined in 7F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, again, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Coniston, advertise for bids for the new tile floor and kitchen lobby and foyer at the Canfield Community Center and fund transfer.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move City Council authorize the comptroller to advertise for bids for the replacement of the tile floor in the kitchen, lobby, and foyer at the Canfield Community Center. Requesting council also to transfer the funds for this project from the 2/18/19 Recreation Repair and Maintenance Account Number 691932, not to exceed $8,000, to 2018/19 Capital Outlet Account Number 691981, as outlined in 7G.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, Park and Recreation Deputy Director Coniston, advertise for bids for Richard A. Young Whirlpool Resurfacing and Fund Transfer.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdele?
I move that we concur with Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Kim Coniston, requesting that City Council authorize the comptroller to advertise for bids for resurfacing the whirlpool at the Richard A. Young Center, and requesting that City Council transfer the funds for this project from the 2018/19 Recreation Part-Time Account to the 2018/19 Capital Outlet Account, not to exceed $4,000, as outlined in item 7H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Coniston, advertise for bids for Richard A. Young Kitchen Remodel and Cabinets and Fund Transfers.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move Council authorize the comptroller to advertise for bids for the replacement of kitchen cabinets at the Richard A. Young Center, including new countertops, painting per attached specification. Also requesting City Council authorize the comptroller to transfer $7,000 from the 2/18/19 Richard Young Repair and Maintenance Account 692932 to the 2018/19 Richard A. Young Account 6928981. Also transfer the balance not to exceed $10,000 from the 2/18/19 Richard Young Center Recreation Programs Account Number 692887 to the 2018/19 Richard Young Capital Outlet Account 692981, as outlined in 7I.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Yes, Councilor.
Councilman Muscat?
I wish that you put something together for a new coffee pot at the Canfield Center, that's all, I just had to throw that in.
We had to choose between the doors and the tile, which, if we have some money, we definitely will do that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, in the reports from Mayor, we have a veto of motion approving retainer agreement with the law firm of Ottenwest, Toewill, and Shank PLC. At this time, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the veto procedure?
Section 713, veto by Mayor. The Mayor shall have the power to veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council, provided that said veto, with the Mayor's reasons in writing, must be filed with the City Clerk at least 24 hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council, at which said meeting, the clerk shall present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may, only at said meeting, reconsider the vote at which such proceedings were passed and adopted, and if so elects, may only at said meeting, re-adopt such proceedings by five-sevenths vote of all members elected, in which event the veto shall be overridden, and it will bar the right of the Mayor from any future vetoes of the proposed legislation. Such proceeding shall then become effective on the following day, succeeding such meeting of the council and ordinances so passed, shall become effective immediately thereafter upon publication. No ordinance, resolution, or other proceeding shall be published until the meeting following the meeting at which said ordinance, resolution, or proceeding was adopted.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I need to move to 9A, and this is where Council Chairwoman Melonowski-Maxwell and Council Proton Bazey, we are going to reintroduce for possible reconsideration of the approved motion 19-125, which is the retainer agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I move that council to reintroduce motion 19-125, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat?
I have a question.
Any questions?
If memory serves me correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, we had once voted on this retainer agreement once before, and it was vetoed, and it was then, the veto was overturned. Why are we doing it again? It was vetoed once, and it was overturned.
I totally agree with you, Councilman Muscat, at this point, I'm going to say, let's just vote, we possibly may have another super veto, and then at this point, we will make sure it never comes back again.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Well, the reason for that was, the lawsuit was filed...
That's a difference...
That's a whole different thing, Councilman Coniston.
...was dismissed.
But that was, that's a completely different, that's a completely different item.
You're off, you're off here.
Even if it was dismissed or not, it's still a separate item from the retainer agreement.
Well, we are voting on this, it's a, it's a motion 19-125 is what we are voting on and discussing at this point in time. Is there any further discussion on motion 19-125, which is the retainer agreement?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel?
The clerk wrote a statement there, and it said that once it was, the Mayor's veto was overridden, the Mayor would not have had the opportunity to veto it again. I'd like some clarification on that.
I suspect that the reason, go ahead, Councilman.
Sure, there are two different motions, so there's two different pieces.
Well, no, we're going to only discuss the motion 19-125, which is the retainer agreement.
But the retainer agreement, the first, the first veto that was overridden, pertained to a resolution in general that had a retention, but it did not have an actual agreement attached with it. The new agreement had to be included and had to be separately approved, because under section 9.5 of the Charter, the Mayor has to end up being able to review it before it can end up being approved. So therefore, that was brought back and approved by this body, and then the Mayor vetoed it, and that's why you have two separate vetoes.
Okay, today, we are reintroducing that motion again, because it was vetoed by the Mayor. In regards to this, we would have to super veto it, which would require at least five out of seven people to vote on this approved motion again. So at this point in time, is there any further discussion? Okay, we will take a vote, and I will roll call in the end. All those in favor of reintroducing approved motion 19-125, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call.
Yes.
Councilman Muscat, yes. Councilman Coniston?
No.
Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Melonowski-Maxwell, yes. Councilman Abdele?
No.
No. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
We do have a super veto, we do have a retainer agreement. Okay, next, on reports from the Mayor, we have Watershed Stewart's Commission Honorary Student Commissioners Appointments.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. This letter is asking for concurrence in the appointments?
For...
For clarification, thank you. So, I move to concur with Mayor Dan Pletko, with the appointment of the individuals listed for honorary student commissioners to the Watershed Stewart's Commission, it is an 8B, I don't think I need to read their names, if you don't want to. That's fine, you can say it's outlined below. As outlined, there it is, thank you.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, the...
Councilman Coniston?
All these students and the teacher, Mrs. Johns from Crestwood, they're a great help, I'm sure as Councilman Wenzel will also attest, against the E. Course Creek cleanup, and they were all there, including one student from Annapolis.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilman Wenzel?
Yes, these students, not only do they show up for the events, they participate in activities at their school, they show up for all the Watershed Stewart meetings, they take part in every aspect as an adult. Watershed Stewart Commissioner Wood and, I had to go off to him for, to see such, the young people committed and dedicated to a project like this and a committee like this, and we're honored to have them on board with us.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, at this time, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, again, we have a second veto of motion approving resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to authorize the law for, of, I don't, Ottenwest, Toewill, and Shank PLC to file a complaint for writ of mandamus against Mayor Pletko.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I move the council, again, to reintroduce Resolution 19-141, as outlined in 9Q.
Okay. At this time, we are on 9Q, that, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion in regards to the reintroduction of the approved motion 19-141?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Can this be explained to me, because I'm kind of lost in this now, that we just had a...
There are two separate ones. The first one was the retainer agreement that we actually approved a long time ago. This is the latest one, where we are going to ask the Mayor to sign it now. We are going to do a writ of mandamus, we are forcing him to sign it, if not, we do take him to court.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Councilman Coniston?
I don't know if you were done.
Yeah, I just needed some explanation, because I don't know what was going on here.
Okay, yeah, this is the second, we had two vetoes, this is the second one, and also for this one, we do need a super veto of five out of seven to pass it, and this will be, is the final step to getting that signed to do...
Forensic.
The forensic.
Question, as we go along this.
Councilman?
But isn't, doesn't our Charter specify that the Mayor has to follow our direction when we have a pass a resolution?
Yes, it is, it is Mr. Meener if he doesn't, but unfortunately, he has refused publicly to sign it, in writing and publicly. So, this is why we're forced, we have to do this as a council body. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Just so we're clear, and I, it's our position that the Charter requires when hiring attorneys, and these are attorneys, not auditors, a procedure to be hired through the Corporation Council, but this is authorization to file a lawsuit.
Absolutely, because the Mayor has refused to sign...
The resolution passed by council.
The resolution that we passed by council, and the Charter says that if we pass something, he's required to sign it.
If I might, Madam Chair, I would certainly sign items if they're legal, you've been told by the Corporation Council on many occasions, you've cut him off, in fact, when he has indicated the council's not followed the Charter as it relates to this matter. Therefore, I will not sign something that is illegal.
Well, then we'll let the court decide on that then, because I do know for a fact, I've done my research, we followed everything to a T, you can say whatever you like, but I know for a simple fact that we are correct in doing everything we have done up to this point.
I'm late, Penney, Corporation Council.
And I have all paperwork, the legwork, and everything to prove it. There's a lot here, I mean, if somebody wants to sit down, I'd be happy to show them it, but I guarantee that everything is in order in regards to this.
Council Chair, another.
Councilman Muscat?
I know back in 2013, the City of Taylor sued Mayor Lamran over something similar that he would not sign, and I do know that the courts actually forced him to sign it, or else he was going to be held in contempt of court. Now, I don't want to see that happening in our city, it's not, not, not good for the city, and I'd like to see if we can work our way around this somehow, but it doesn't seem...
Well, what's, what's going to happen is, when we pass this, the Mayor has till tomorrow to sign it, he does have the right to sign it, we're not just going right to court, we're giving him a chance to sign it, and if he still refuses to sign it, then we have, we can take this to court.
See, I'm in favor of, of an audit, we need one, we've been needing one for many, many years, no one goes this long without books being audited, and we also need a Charter revision in this city, one that hasn't been, we're well over 50 years old on, on a document that, you know, is as old as Methuselah, and that also comes into play too.
Well, like I said, this is a last effort to ask the Mayor to just please sign it.
Madam Chair.
At this point, Councilman Abdele?
I just have a question, and I've asked it before, you know, we talk about doing an audit, we have an audit that's done every single year by Plant Moran, and, and I've contacted them, they have the answers to the questions that we've got. I still, and I've said it before, but I'll just reiterate again, before we go into a spending spree, bring them in again, for a study session, ask whatever questions that you've got, if it, if it is not satisfactory at that particular point, then we'll go to the next level, but before we go spending $35,000 for an attorney or a law firm to pick an auditor, and then spend all kinds of money doing a forensic audit for 10 years of every financial record in the city, I've said it before, and I still will say it again, and this has nothing to do with the Mayor pro or con, I just think we should start with that step first, before we go to this next step.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, real quick, you know, this is my eighth year on council, and I love serving our community, and I love our community, but I will tell you how disappointed I am that we are at this point where we have to do this, that the council has to sue in order to get a legislative act by this body, which is binding, a resolution, this is not, you know, you know, get it through, to see it through, fulfilled, this is not the only resolution, though, I mean, you have the cars and being labeled, I mean, there's, it's just so, I don't understand, because we're all trying to do what's best for the residents, if you're doing what's best for residents, just, there's nothing to hide, there's nothing to lose, I'm not saying you are.
Yeah, we can't pick and choose which ordinances or resolutions we've chosen.
Yeah, we've got to be consistent, and it's not fair to our constituents, our taxpayers who we serve, and it makes us all look, we all get a black eye out of this.
Kate?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Okay, so, Plant Moran, I looked at the last 10 years of audits, there's been multiple recommendations, every year, same recommendation, nothing was done. There's an issue with, you know, we've heard that over and over, overcharge on retiree healthcare, $2.2 million, the city was asked to have a formal process in place, never happened. There's a CSO overcharge of $3.8 million, the city kept collecting, even though the city was asked to adjust prior, to set the following year CSO levies, never happened. The water fund is currently and has been used as a cash cow, you know, residents are being charged excessive amounts for water bills, there's excessive amounts of payments on credit cards that the city has, there's inventory of, there's a lot of city cars, we keep getting these invoices with car repairs, I don't even know who these cars belong to, we got, I mean, there's more cars in Dearborn Heights than any city that I've seen, there's also, I don't know who owns what, what department owns which vehicle, we purchased a vehicle just few, last year, and it's sitting in somebody's garage, and that same person, he's driving another vehicle, so that particular person has two vehicles, so he retired, came back to work for the city, I don't want to mention names, so I don't know, Mayor, I've heard of the golden watch, you know, when you retire, I didn't know they have a brand new vehicle that they can have when they retire. Okay, so, we're paying excessive amounts of repairs, gasoline, we buy gasoline, there's people getting gas, gas at local stations, excessive amounts, there's contracts being awarded to favored companies for years, and not properly bid it till just recently. The mayor mentioned, when I questioned one company that was based out of DPW, I said, why are we it's it's on tape, why are we using why this particular company is housed out of DPW? We're paying over $40,000 a month for the last six, seven years that I've looked at, over half a million dollars a year, and nobody questioned that, not the other two council members, never been questioned. I brought it up since January, the January of last year, when I took when I swore, I took oath for the residents, not for the mayor, to represent the citizens of Dearborn Heights. Again, this particular company, I asked the mayor, why are they housed are are they housed at our DPW garage? And we have some people at DPW that work for DPW, they couldn't even use a DPW for break room, they had to go use their vehicles or somewhere else for break rooms. And I'd looked at that company, that company is based out of Grand Rapids. That's ridiculous. Those resolutions are not being followed. They keep vetoing resolutions, or even we pass a resolution, the mayor picks and chooses which resolution he's going to follow. Again, like one example is the salaries that we took back, they pay raises, but they keep, you know, giving the raises. Also, another one, FEMA granted, there's $2.8 million in 2016 and $1.4 million in 2018. Okay, so and there's also homes are being demolished without proper abatement and risking our residents to asbestos and lead. I asked that for years, for the last year, I have not been given proper paperwork. We've taken pictures. I know the chief is looking into it right now. There's also, when I asked, I wanted to see where the where the grant, the money that was for the houses that were demolished, I was given appraisals. So there's a one one grant, just one grant, there's a one one million dollars. I don't know where it went, because we're telling the residents, we pay them this amount, this amount, but yet the grant was for another amount, so there's a gap of $1 million. I looked at the the check registry, there's money spent by the city unauthorized, there's some of them unauthorized payments by the council, excessive amounts.
They're under the amount.
It's it's over the amount, not approved by the council. And I've seen multiple, maybe like for the last, the ones I've looked at, dozens of charges that the city's paying utility slash cable bills, and those look like residential payments. There's entertainment, local and out of area restaurants, excessive thousands of dollars in restaurants, liquor stores, pubs, breweries, winery, vineyards, over $40,000 that I've looked at.
Madam Chair, these are, you get to have some specifics.
Point of order, please.
Cruises.
Point of order.
No, no, no.
Point of order.
These are lies.
Point of order.
They're out of order.
Point of order.
I can post that on tomorrow.
Give me the details, Councilman, and then we'll talk about some of your stuff.
Okay, there's cruises, museums, zoos, sporting events out of state, casinos, cider mills.
Those are senior trips.
I looked at it, and I seen on sports stores, that's all I have. That's why we recommending for forensic audit.
Is there any further discussion?
What?
Madam Chair. Councilman Coniston.
Did I what, or repeat what Councilman Abdullah said? There's an audit done every year by a national company. It's the council that arranges and conducts and receives the audit. That's the place to start, before we spend $35,000, hire a law firm that's not licensed to do an audit.
Character assassination.
Hey, point of order. Please let the councilmen speak.
I'm sorry, Councilman Coniston, I apologize.
We go through the years that are in question and ask either auditor's Plant Moran or some other auditors, how much money came in, and what was the money spent on?
Thank you. Any further comment? Personally, I think this lawsuit is necessary because we have it on very good information that money has been misappropriated. It is our fiduciary duty to determine if this fact is true. To do this, we need a financial audit. One has to question why the mayor would oppose such an audit if he has done nothing wrong. Actions speak louder than words. His action in obstructing our efforts to get to the bottom of this speak volumes. I have no further comment at this time. Anybody else? Any other, okay, at this time, we'll take a vote. This is our veto. This was eight C, and we reintroduce nine Q, just for record purposes, Mr. Clerk. So at this time, we need five out of seven to super veto. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's take a poll. Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Coniston.
No.
No. Councilman Bazey.
Yes.
Councilman Bazey, yes. Councilman Malinowski Maxwell, yes. Councilman Abdullah?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Wensel?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have a super veto that is, we have overridden that, we have reintroduced the motion. Mayor, you have till tomorrow to sign it. We're going to give you time, and we're going to ask you to be respectful and sign it, because council has passed this, according to charter. If you don't, it is a misdemeanor.
Who's threatening?
Nobody's threatening, it's a fact.
Sounds like a threat to me.
If you look at the court, that's what was said to you in court the other day.
It was not.
Yes, it was. And you know what? Anybody that doubts that, you can order the transcripts. I already called the court. You can request the transcripts through Wayne County Third Circuit Court, and it was room 1401. And it's public record, anybody can do it. If you want the number, I got it. See me after the meeting, I'll be happy to give it to you. And then you can see who's telling the truth in this. Okay. Next item on the agenda is reports from city officials. We have Treasurer Riley, investment of funds report for March 31, 2019. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is a received, known and filed, so I moved to receive, known and file, investment of funds report for March 31, 2019.
Support.
Heard by Councilman Bazey, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Community and Economic Development Department Director Hashem, PY 2019 CDBG Action Plan.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I motion that we concur with CEDBG Director Joe Hashem, recommending that the city council approve the PY 2019 CDBG Action Plan. In addition, recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the certifications, SF dash four two four application, and SF four two four D assurances, and the CEDD will submit all documents to HUD on or after April 24, 2019, as outlined in item nine C.
Support.
What, Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, we have three, the fourth entry on here for the $30,000. I'd like to actually see that come to our city right now, especially after the flooding that we've had some issues. I'd like to see if we can use that money here.
Mr. Maria one?
Yep.
Vista Maria Facility Rehabilitation.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Wensel.
I'd like to echo that Vista Maria is a fine institution, and because of the damage and the suffering that the residents in the South End have experienced lately, I think that money could be put at least temporarily back into some kind of relief effort for the South End residents. And also, there was a $3,500 allowance to the LAHC. These are, these are special interests, I guess, determined to be, the citizens of Dearborn Heights need that money. I've gone over this report, and I noticed there's a $100,000 in code enforcement. I'm not sure what exactly that is, $100,000. It's a salary, maybe, or something. I'm asking the CDBG Director or someone in the department to to tell us what they can do to help us out in this. How can we move money around or do something for the residents of Dearborn Heights instead of putting the money into these other groups? Not, I don't know if we have any money left over from last year that we can help the citizens on the on the South End, or maybe we can set up programs for the future, because the way it looks now, there's going to be more damage before this problem's fixed.
Thank you. Director Hashem, would you like to respond to that? Please come to the microphone.
Question, please. I don't understand your question.
I guess is any, can any of these funds be used to help the flood victims? And can you explain why not?
Not in a special emergency situation.
Even if they're in that, the special areas?
Flood plate.
You can.
Is there, is there, is there something that your department could do for the residents of Dearborn Heights, South End residents?
We do a lot of things, actually.
I mean, for the flood victims.
$1,120,000.
For this, this flood?
$1,000 of Vista Maria, because that has to be the national objective of HUD. The other one that you mentioned, the 2,700, 3,500, that also meets the national objective, so we have to spend that money naturally. The rest of the $1 million, that's.
I know your department does a lot of, a lot of good things for the community with the monies they receive, but I'm asking you to come up with some kind of a plan or some kind of monies to help out the flood victims. There's no way possible at all? And your, your deputy director?
I don't have a deputy, I'm the director. The rest of the, I'll be more than happy to answer. This one has been on the website for six months. We have already talked about it in two public.
Well, this, this flood only happened last week.
The money cannot be switched around.
Not even an emergency situation? That's a definite answer?
This money has to follow certain HUD rules, we do not just handle it, because we have.
There's no emergency situation, definitely not, 100%.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, the, the issue, Councilman Wensel, as you, I'm sure you know, is if it's a low income area, if it's approved, you know, for HUD, we might want to say, take the money and and picks up Parkland Park or something. It's, it's got to be, for the low income area, it's got to be approved spending for HUD. There's other monies available for the victims of the flood, and we've had FEMA and other people come here, but just to take money at the last minute and try to say, well, we're going to use it for for flooding them. And I suppose the area west of Telegraph, those homes that flooded, that is definitely a low income area, but that, that has to be planned out. It can't be.
This is an emergency, you can't plan out a flood. I mean, this is something that happened, you know.
Director.
There is no emergency, we have an emergency fund grant, this is a grant that we get every year, and we have to submit it back. So maybe there might be other grants for emergency. This is not one of them. This is a grant that has to follow certain objectives, and that's why we follow these projects.
That was another part of my statement, is can you do something? Can you put your heads together there and come up with some kind of monies or a plan in, in event this happens again, and you know it's going to happen again before the problem's solved?
Do you know what, the administration is seeing there's other grants available for that particular.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston. This is the second time, go ahead.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's spent not the correct way, we can lose our, our money from HUD. We can, you know, the program can be not qualified, that's the problem.
Yeah, well, this was a question for Director Hashem anyway, so go ahead. Any other questions? Okay, at this point, let's take a vote on this. We are voting on the Community and Economic Development Department, the action plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. We have Bazey, Malinowski Maxwell, and Wensel as opposed. Next item on the agenda is Park and Recreation Deputy Director Coniston, replacement of the floor mounted overhead braced metal partitions for Richard A. Young Center's lobby restrooms.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Kim Coniston, requesting the city council authorize the deputy director to hire a company to complete the project using funds out of 2018-19 capital outlay budget, six nine two dash nine eight one, not to exceed the amount of $6,600. And this is for the replacement of the floor mounted metal partitions for the Richard A. Young Center, as outlined in item nine D.
Second. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is City Clerk Prushevich's Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the budget adjustments as proposed by our city clerk, Mr. Prushevich, as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Treasurer Riley, interfund loans.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur with our Treasurer, John Riley, and approve the interfund loans if needed at the interest rate of 2.55% per annum between the funds listed in nine F to the maximum amount listed, which is 1,600,000, with conditions that the loans be paid back on or before September 15, 2019, to assist our city with our cash flow, as outlined in nine F.
Support.
Or?
Supported by Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair. So where's the law, where's the money coming from? Is, I can't remember the study session.
Would you like to answer that?
Water, water.
So what, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey's opposed. Next item on the agenda is Corporation Counsel Miyaki, new assessment contract with Anthony Fuoco Assessing Consultant Incorporated.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I approve the assessment contract, City of Dearborn Heights, between the city and Anthony Fuoco Assessing Consultant Incorporated, and to authorize Mayor Puletco and City Clerk Prushevich to execute this contract on behalf of the city.
Second. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question for our assessor Fuoco. You mentioned that there's a possibility where it would be changed over to Mrs. Kimberly Comer. When would that take place? Is that official? Will we have an opportunity to meet her and qualification?
She's here. Introduce her.
Oh, okay. So do we have an idea, and I'm sorry, with all due respect, just on qualifications, because obviously, we're familiar with yours, but we're not familiar with hers as much.
Well, she just received her Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer Certification, so she's eligible to sign the role for Dearborn Heights, so she's qualified. So it's a, it's a backup that the time comes of where, you know, she needs to take over for if something, or something happens to me, or I can't really provide all the services, then she would be eligible, qualified, to carry on the.
But at this particular point, you're staying on board in the foreseeable future.
And Kimberly will definitely be a major part of.
Just transition in.
Right, the transition in.
Council Chair.
So this way, you won't be caught with.
Right.
Without an assessor.
Thank you. Just want to make that, I'm sure that his staff is intact, and that's where all the bread and butter really is, is in the staff.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have DPW Director Selmy, 2017-2018 street paving program certificate for payment number seven and change order number one approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Selmy, and he's at this particular point, he prepared weight trim for 2017 and 18 street paving programs consisting of reconstruction of Silvery Lane and George Avenue, as stated in weight, in weight trims transmittal change order number one is the final reconciling change order to adjust the pay items for work one is the final reconciling change order to adjust the pay items for work actually performed, resulting in a decrease of $191,000, $128.91 to the contract value. And the department is requesting approval of a change order number one and certificate for payment number seven in the amount of $176,476.30 as outlined in item 9A. Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have.
Councilman Muscat?
I just want to make Mrs. Selmy aware that we need to get Haas still fixed. Money is still in the coffers there where the workmanship wasn't all that great, and I'd like to see that get, whether it's, it's time?
It's scheduled for June.
For June, okay. I'll be watching, just make sure that gets done. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy, 2019 CDBG Water Main Replacement Program Design Engineering Authorization.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move this council authorize the city to prepare design plans and specifications, acquire the necessary permits for construction, advertise for bids in the amount not to exceed $45,000. After the bids are received, a recommendation of award will be submitted to the city for consideration, as outlined in 9--
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy, Water Department Equipment Purchase for 2019 Finn T-75T Hydro Cedar with Hose Reel.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Selmy, and he is requesting permission to purchase one 2019 Finn T-75T Hydro Cedar with Hose Reel from Alta Equipment Company located in New Hudson. And this purchase will be expensed out to the 2018-19 Water Department Capital Outlay Budget, as outlined in item 9J.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy, Water Department Equipment Purchase, 2018 Caterpillar 420F2 APR Backhoe Loader.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move council concur to purchase one 2018 Caterpillar Backhoe Loader, as outlined in 9K.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey, and I also want to make it known that this is being purchased through the my deal, the same thing we went through the forensic people within the attorney. So my deal is something we do participate in.
Council Chair?
That's why we didn't go for all the bids, because we did the my deal. Go ahead, Councilman Wenzel.
I noticed this hasn't gone off for bids. Is the my deal contract guaranteed lowest?
Yes. It's a state-of-Michigan thing.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I know we need this, and I'm gonna probably say something that I'm not really, don't know for sure, but I'm willing to bet that this is used 98% of the time for water main breaks. I can't see them using a backhoe too much unless they had a front loader on it for something else. But again, if it is used, like the gentleman that came up here earlier, for other things, everyone needs to share in these costs. You know, I even see the repairs to trucks, purchase for parts, and everything is charged to water. And I see those same trucks going out and picking up yard debris, going out when they cut grass. So they're not strictly used just for water. And it comes time where water is such a commodity these days, it's almost like gold. You got people that don't flush their toilets at night because their water rates are too high, and yet we continue just to buy from water because that's basically where the money is. So we have to start doing better on our purchases and spread them out according to the percentage that they're used in. That's my opinion on this.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy, the Warren Venture Storm Water Operation and Maintenance Resolution and Agreement. I'm going to make a statement now that, for some reason, there is no resolution with this. Can we bring this back the next meeting?
The resolution should have been with the clerk's office.
Yeah, it was attached. I have it here. Must not have made a copy for you.
It's not ours.
Yeah, he's got it. I got it right here.
Back next meeting. You have the resolution?
You sure you don't have it attached?
No. You don't. No, I just flagged it.
Is this--
Do you have it?
Yeah. It's authorization firm to sign this.
I just gotta, you know, I know we haven't made a motion, but--
There is none.
What is this for? I mean, you give me an address. I don't know what that address is. I--
Should be on the resolution.
This a business?
Yes. It's the new business across from the Warren Valley.
Okay. So what does this cost the taxpayers?
Costs the taxpayer nothing.
Nothing? This is absolutely--
It's part of the stormwater infrastructure there. County requires the city to make sure it gets maintained. So to make sure it gets maintained, you pass a resolution saying that the homeowner is responsible, or the property owner is responsible. If the property owner doesn't do it, then the city will come in and--
Build in.
Whatever, and build.
Okay. I read it, but I wasn't 100% sure on that.
Right. There's no cost to the city, no cost to the taxpayers.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that we concur with John Selmy on this. I know you don't have anything, but it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything, and it puts the place of business in a process where they have to maintain that. And anytime I can get somebody to maintain some stormwater that doesn't cost the taxpayers, I'm all for it. So I make a motion that we approve this, as outlined in 9L.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Personally, I feel more comfortable accepting, I mean, I'm okay with this in general, but I'd like to see the resolution--
I would too.
--if we vote on it.
Yes. Can we get that next meeting, please?
Well, I had the original resolutions, and I gave it to the clerk's office and mayor's office, so I'll have to go back and have them redrafted somewhere.
Madam Chair? Is this the resolution? Is this--
Councilman Coniston, did you want to be recognized?
I'm sorry. It's not a resolution.
It's on the legal side's paper, so it wouldn't be on the paper.
Okay. It must have got lost along the way somewhere.
Can I just mention, Madam Chair, that the project is on hold, Wayne County's requiring this resolution approval from you--
Okay.
--before they'll issue any more permits to the-- This is that--
When we get the resolution, we can approve it then.
Yeah.
But we got it.
We move to--
Well, there's a motion on the floor. We can vote on it.
No, listen.
We can amend it.
You can amend it.
Well, then, I'll make an amendment that we will bring this up after we have the resolution in hand for a vote.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We'll see you at the next meeting on that.
So the next item is the same thing, so if that resolution's not attached, I just do the same thing.
Okay, so let's do the same--
I apologize, I don't know what happened to him.
We want to make the same motion-- Madam Chair, I'll make the motion if you want. Go ahead, Councilwoman Abdullah. Thank you. What I want to do with this is refer it back to the administration, to our DPW director, to get that document into the clerk's office, so it can be added to the agenda for us to vote on, sir.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. All those in favor, go ahead, clerk.
9M has the resolution attached.
9M does have the resolution.
So it has the resolution--
In all fairness, they both had resolutions, so--
All right, so I'll amend my motion.
And actually, the resolutions are the same. The only thing that'll be different on there are the addresses.
Then we can go back, since it's the same meeting, and re-go over item L if we want.
Yeah, and just do it again.
Let's just do item L, because we found it in the next one. So we have 9L is deep, we can re, we're going to readdress it because we did find the resolution. It was on the next one. It was on M.
So go back to 9L.
L and M, the same resolution, though?
Yes, yes. And it was attached to M, but not to L.
Same resolution, two different addresses.
There's different addresses.
So it's not the same.
So it's not same resolution.
All right, let's just do M then.
Different address.
All right. So, Madam Chair, I amend my motion. Okay. As the maker of the motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Support.
So I'm going to move to adopt the resolution that's attached to 9M, but because there is also an agreement that we have to authorize, I move to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign, as outlined in 9M.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any further discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
While we're talking about this address, I believe this is the Starbucks on Ford Road, and while the ordinance officers are here, they've got a big sign of their developer there, and it block, if you're John Daly, it's blocking the view of eastbound Ford Road. That sign needs to be pushed back--
Okay.
--or taken down, or whatever, okay?
I'll present that to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Deputy Chief Badlo, Rapid Intervention Team and RIT Command Training Quote Acceptance.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move we concur with Deputy Fire Chief Vaskin Badlo. The department conducted particular training, in this case, in regards to RIT command training in the past, and it has gained popularity among the firefighting community in western Wayne County. And at this particular point, we are concurring with item 9N.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is Fire Chief Brogan Flooring at HQ Authorization.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move the council authorize to have a new floor installed at the North End Fire Station, as outlined in 9O. There's a bunch of reasons why it needs to be, all you got to just walk in there and see why it needs to be replaced.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Voltaturne, American Express Credit Card Request for Approval.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move that we concur with our Police Chief Dan Voltaturne and approve a departmental credit card through American Express with a credit limit of $25,000, so we can pay for training and other items and get the points, and then use the American Express points, as the treasurer does, for other purchases, as outlined in 9P. Support.
Okay. Supported by Councilman Muscat?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
And I know it's written right here, but I just want to make sure 100%. It is asking that Chief Dan Voltaturne be authorized on this account, which is fine, but it doesn't clarify that nobody else is authorized. So I just want to make sure for clarity, you're the only one that's authorized to be able to use this?
It'll be in my name, Chief Dan Voltaturne. And then, in six months, when there's a change in command, the next police chief will have the card issued in his name, and we finally get to take it out of the former chief's name.
Right.
We've been using that to get along.
Chief Voltaturne, I see here it says that you want to be authorized to use this as flowers for funeral and specialty items?
Correct.
That is against NML, to use government funds for those items. So you might want to revise this, because you can't use it for those.
Okay, we won't send flowers to funerals. We'll figure out some other way to do it.
I understand, because I found that in our actual--
Well, we'll research it also.
--ledger for our checks now, that, you know, that needs to be addressed. On certain things, we're using it for, you can't use it. We don't want to be in any violations right now--
I agree.
--since we're going for an audit.
No violations.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I second this, because, but, you know, for one thing only, though, is council needs to have a bi-monthly report on all of this stuff, all the credit cards. It doesn't matter if it's $50 or $500 or $1,500. We need to know where the money is being spent. And I want to see a record of that. I don't want to have to walk into the treasurer's department and ask for a printout of a year's worth that's 400 pages long. We should have these in our packets, bi-monthly.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazey?
So what changed from the last administration chief? So the previous chief, did he have that same amount, same credit card, or is it something different?
It was a different card. So we're consolidating it to one card, so we could, the points and everything go to, through the treasurer's office, through the American Express.
So was there a credit card previous, the previous chief?
Correct.
Okay, so where is that card at now?
It's in my office.
So is that voided, or?
It will be once this one's, if this one's approved.
And I'm sorry, one last question. What's the amount on that one?
$25,000.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
I want to piggyback on Councilman Muscat's request that this card be approved on the condition that we receive a copy of every statement on that card in our packet.
Can you do that?
From now on, any kind of card issued to the city--
Any kind of card.
--we have to, we approve, we see every statement on the card.
Can you provide us with that, chief?
Well, it's submitted through the controller's office. I will follow whatever process. So the bill is submitted to--
Right. And you get the bill? Can you give us a copy in the controller?
The bill is submitted to the controller's office, and then the deductions are from the specified accounts. I will, all the bills need to go to the city council. We'll make sure it gets routed that way.
Yeah, city council is requesting a copy of it. Madam Chair?
Whatever the process is, whatever the process is, we'll follow it.
We're requesting it, so-- Councilwoman Hicks Clayton? My question is to further expand on that, because I agree with both the councilmen on this. Other departments that have credit cards?
None.
None?
I took them all away when I came here.
Okay. Because I would like to see, I think we all would like to see--
I took all the petty cash accounts away, because you couldn't control who was spending what. So they're all gone. This is the only one I'm aware of.
You know, I guess I got a question, too. On the check registry, there is credit card fees. What are those from?
The only credit cards I'm aware of is John has one and the police have one. I don't know of any other credit cards.
All right, no problem. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, at this point, we are.
I amend the motion for the credit card.
For the credit card?
Do you have the statement?
Yes.
I amend the moment, amend the motion to have a report sent to Dearbornhead City Council members on a monthly basis.
And who seconded it? Supported by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we're under ordinances and resolutions.
May I interrupt you for a second? Before we get any further down the road, I'd like to go back for some housekeeping here. We were going through our papers. L and M, the War and Adventure Stormwater operation and the MKR Investments. Please clarify, was that done separately, or was it done concurrently? But the, my understanding is that resolution will suffice for.
No.
Or will we be provided with a separate resolution?
Yes, for L, they're gonna provide us with a separate resolution.
Okay, so we do not have that one, but it's been passed.
No, it was not passed until we get the resolution.
He's gonna bring it back next meeting with the resolution.
Yeah, L's not approved.
M was approved.
Okay, L was referred back to the administration. Thank you for the clarification.
All set?
Got it.
Okay. Next, under ordinances and resolutions, we have DPW Director Salmy, designation of street administrator resolution.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move to concur with John Salmy, Director of DPW, for the designation of street administrators provided in 11A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, under new business, we have the business license renewal for Moroz Ketrovsky, VFW Post Number 9973, located at 5312 South Beach Daily, and Antonio's Cusina Italiana, located at 26356 Ford Road, Erwin's Auto Sales Incorporated, located at 23706 Van Born, and Denny's Gin Mill, located at 4901 South Telegraph.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Can we take all of these together since they're all in good standing?
Yes.
I move that council approve business license for everyone, including as outlined in 13D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
13A, excuse me.
I'm sorry, 13A.
This question is for the clerk, as of, because as you know, the packets were combined together from the 423 meeting. And at that particular time, the one for Denny's Gin Mill, they owed $720 for a water bill. Is that still outstanding? Is that paid? Is it zeroed out? What's the status?
Oh, it was.
We attached the receipt, Councilman, if you didn't get a copy of it.
It's paid.
There's a receipt that it was paid.
We're good, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have a permanent traffic control device, T-273, no parking here to corner west side of Robinson from Van Born to the creek. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the permanent traffic control device, T-273, no parking here to corner west side of Robinson from Van Born to the creek, as submitted in 13B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have removal of traffic control device, no parking signs, north side of Powers.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with Deputy Captain Mark Myers, and this is for the removal of the no parking sign on the north side of Powers as outlined in item 13C.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. My question for Traffic Division or the Police Chief is, no parking signs were added at one point for a reason. Can you tell us the reason why, the impact of removing those, and what brought you to the conclusion after a study? I imagine that the signs are no longer needed for, well, you know, prohibiting parking.
So that area of Powers was rerouted to direct traffic away from OW Best School. So in front of the school, there's only one-way traffic going east. So the person at the corner house that in question, he is unable to park on that side of the street because of the way the traffic is, or was at the time. So now that the street's one-way, he could, he has the ability to park on the side and not interfere with traffic beating OW Best.
Thank you.
Okay.
So any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have business license renewals for Applebee's Number 8085, located at 26582 Ford Road, Buck's Pub, located at 23845 Warren, Carrera's Cusina Italiana, located at 6565 North Telegraph, First Mutual Auto, located at 6888 North Telegraph, and Stick Carl E. Post, Number 232, located at 23850 Military. Madam Chair.
Did we approve those already?
No.
No, not yet.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the business license renewals as outlined in 13D.
Support.
Supported by.
Support.
Councilman Bazey, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. At this point, we open it up to comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Received a lot of phone calls and emails concerning trash pickup. People are being missed, arguing with neighbors about parked cars out in front of the street, out in front of their homes where their garbage cans, trash cans can't be picked up. We have to get, we have to get a handle on this. We're going on a number of years now that this was done. We should've done this long before we got those trash cans. I said so myself before I was a councilperson, to get everybody accumulated to not parking on the street. Some people just feel like they don't have room, but I don't know of any way to allow these big trucks to come down the road and pick up containers if they can't get to the containers. That's one thing. But we also have to look back at our ordinance of the time limit, and we need to hold GFL a little bit of accountable of getting the trash picked up. Now, I understand we had a big flood just recently, and they've been working around the clock, and I thank them for that, but some of the hours that they come pick it up, they're, they're way past 6, 7 o'clock at night. And it shouldn't take that long. I mean, Waste Management never had this length of time when they did this. And had complaints with, I've seen the videos where the drivers were very rude to, to the residents of the city. I, myself, had one when my wife and I, where the car was very rude to us. They still continue to pick up the trash cans and drive down the street and put them down 30 feet away from where you had it, and you gotta go chase them down. And something needs to be done to rectify this issue. The residents deserve something better than this, and hopefully we don't get residents fighting amongst themselves over trash pickup. It's just not a good thing to have. That's my take for the day.
Thank you. Councilman Bazey.
Madam Chair, actually, I would like to acknowledge one of our fallen officers, Officer Jason McCosky. He was badge seven, end of watch, 5, May 25, 2006. He was given his father's badge number in honor of his father. He also served for the city. Jason was a proud dad to Cameron. I'd like to give a few moments of silence, please. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yes, I just have a quick question. It's gonna be for the controller. My understanding was brought to my attention, and I want to first start by saying, we really appreciate the city employees that went out and helped the weekend after the flood, May 1st. You know, whether it was Saturday, Sunday. My question is, it's been brought to my attention, is that they were paid, they were sent an email, say, can you, are you willing to do this? You know, there's overtime, there's double time on Sunday. One, is that true? And two, what budget line item is that coming out of?
I don't have the knowledge of the emails saying they get double and whatnot, but they did get paid for the work that they've done. It's coming out of a specific line item that I created in the water fund that says flood of 2019, so that it would be traceable just in case of the FEMA reimbursement.
I'm sorry, can you explain why it's coming out of water fund again, please, for clarification? I mean, the flood, are you saying it's related to an infrastructure problem? 'Cause we wouldn't say it's a natural disaster, correct?
I put it under the water fund because that's where the other FEMA grant is. So I just assumed that's where it should go.
So it's being paid out of the water fund?
Correct. At this point in time, yes.
'Cause it's stormwater and sanitary backup.
Okay, any other comments from the council members? Councilwoman Wenzel.
Yeah, that's, boy, something we should look into. I didn't realize they were, I understand, you know, the firefighters out there helping people, pulling people out of the houses and stuff like that, that's 100% necessary, but being paid in overtime, I don't know, that's something we should look into. But the garbage collection, a day doesn't go by where I don't get an email about garbage collection. This morning, I was driving my kids to school down Polk Street, going to St. Sebastian's School, and I noticed every can, I said, now, that's cool. Look at all, every can's up on the curb, just how they should be. Went and dropped the kids off, spent about a half hour in the school. I come back, and on my way back, I was, my jaw hit the floor. Every can that the garbage guys had just gone by, and they're in about the middle of a four-block stretch, every can that they attended to, and there was a crew, driver, two guys dumping the cans manually, every can was left in the street. I turned around, I stopped, and I said, hey, you guys, I said, I seen you guys take every one of them cans off the curb, dump them, and put them back in the street. I said, we clean streets on trash day. Now, every one of these residents is not gonna be able to get their street swept. He goes, I'm sorry, he said, we didn't know, no one told us. We had to put the cans back on the curb. So I said, okay, well, I'm gonna have to address this, because that's, that's a main issue. The cans are out in the street, the streets don't get swept, the guys go right down the middle of the street. Then, on the way back, because of Annapolis construction, I went down Part East Street to go back home, where they're doing some roadwork on, on Annapolis, and garbage collection was being done on Part East Street, right in front of the school, right during drop-off time. Big giant garbage truck, and like a one-way traffic situation, no parking on one side, no parking on the other side, no double parking, and here comes a big garbage truck coming right through. They gotta do something about that. I mean, it was, it was, I sat there literally for 15 minutes and no one moved. The poor parking, crossing guard girl, she's like trying to frantically direct traffic. We had a police officer there, and I talked to him, he said he wasn't there to direct traffic. Yeah, I don't know what he was doing, but he, he said he wasn't there to direct traffic. And it was just chaos there in the corner. If we can't get the garbage guys to say, hey, around any school, around drop-off, reschedule that to before or after drop-off time. And that's, speaking of St. Sebastian, where my kids go to school, this weekend, they're having their annual St. Sebastian Festival, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Everybody come out, have a good time. This past weekend, we had the Ecorse Creek Cleanup, our 26th Annual officially, it's probably been more than 30 years, but officially 26th Annual, and it occurred right after the flood. A lot of people had the misconception that this creek cleanup was to prevent flooding. It's not to prevent flooding, it's to make awareness of what, what you shouldn't be doing in the creek, like throwing debris in there. I pulled out a shopping cart that was stuck in the creek for over a year, I was told by a resident, that built up a six-foot island around it, blocking one-third of the creek, one shopping cart. No telling what a shopping cart, tire, or barrel will do. We had a great time. Of all the years I've been doing this, probably the best creek cleanup we've ever had. My hat goes off to all the students, Honor Society students from the high schools, and special hats off to Barb Gorica, our chairperson. This is her baby. She loves it, she's dedicated, she deserves some kind of award for this. She's, does it every year religiously, and a great person. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
Yeah, and I participated also in the creek cleanup, where amongst other things, we helped maintain the rain gardens, and we put mulch down and explained to people that you can't use the creek as a dumping ground. The Honor students usually are more not in the creek, like Councilman Wenzel, who was good enough to get that shopping cart out. But I'd like to thank everyone that helped out after the flood, including the, this Billy Graham Ministries, they came up, they had a trailer parked at the Richard Young Center, and they go out and they clean basements of homeowners that don't have any insurance, clean it out, spray it, and there's, there's no charge to the homeowner. So myself and some other people talked to a gentleman who was up from South Carolina. They were also in River Rouge, Ecorse, Lincoln Park, Allen Park, but again, thank you to them, and thank you to everyone that helped out.
Council Chair, I had a, I had a fourth item there. I know that the GFL was out the past two Saturdays picking up debris, and the residents were very happy for this, and I was just wondering, how is, how are they getting paid for that? Is that an extra? It's an extra, and that comes, out of which budget is that coming out of?
It'll come out of the trash removal. But a lot of the stuff is being kept in a particular account because we hope that we might receive reimbursement for it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. I just wanted to add for the residents, and I will need some help from our Emergency Disaster Manager, Lee Gavin, as well as if Seham is here from WDHD wants to join the conversation, but for residents' information, with the flooding, we taped a show today that's gonna be on WDHD, and we shared resources, including, I believe it's Samaritan Purse is the Billy Graham Project that's here, and they're still at Richard A. Young Center and will be, I hope, for a few more days, which is at 5400, excuse me, McKinley, 5400 McKinley. But there was some good information, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Gavin, Director Gavin, to get up and share, 'cause people were asking about the FEMA, right? And you shared in the show what we're, what we're at, what we're doing right now, how that looks. Would you mind doing that for the record, since we're taped here tonight, and let people know about this show and to watch for it?
Thank you, Lisa, counsel. So we'll begin with that Samaritans Purse that Councilman Conston was talking about. It's a group that will volunteer to come in your house and clean up. They're vetted. So it's, Billy Graham is part of it, there's some spiritual counseling on one half, but the other is, they'll come in your house, we receive positive feedback. So they are down, they have a command center at the Richard A. Young Center, like Lisa said, 5400 McKinley. If you go down there, they're gonna be down there a few more days. They've only had three people as of today show up. If nobody shows up, they'll move on to another area. They were in Lincoln Park, it was on, I believe, Channel 2 or Channel 4 news, and they do good work. So if any of our residents still need help cleaning the basement, sanitizing, lifting things out, make sure you go down to the Richard A. Young Center and meet with those, that group down there. Back to, as an update, yesterday, we went out with the emergency managers, the state police, we went to different homes in the city, we compiled the list, we turned it over to the state police, they went to certain homes, they're compiling their list of damage. Some of you residents, maybe we're at your house, didn't go in the house, that's their protocol, state police, so we had emergency managers from, from around the state, Potaski area, Upper Peninsula, so they all combined, and the three major cities that were hit the hardest in this flood was Dearborn Heights, Allen Park, and Ecorse. So those were the three cities that they concentrated on. They will submit all their findings, and they will turn it back into the governor's office, and then from there, they'll determine if it goes to the next level, which is FEMA. So anybody that thinks FEMA is involved now, there was some miscommunication, stuff out there on the internet, FEMA's not involved. It's in the state police hands, the governor's office, and if she determines there's enough to go forward, she'll send it up. There's a certain threshold that they need to reach. So that's, now that's in, in her office and her staff's office. So we've completed our assessment with them, it's all been turned over, so now they'll go and they'll determine what next level. We ask you if any residents have not contacted us at City Hall. We're compiling a big master list for our records of names of residents, we're over 1,000, and any damage that they suffered. Also, we have a website set up, and it's flood2019@dearborn-highs.mi.us. We ask that you send any pictures or information to that website, we're attaching it to our main database, so we'll have your name and any of the information. So if anyone here or anyone hears this, this is gonna be out tomorrow, we'll have it on cable tomorrow. You continue calling 791-3490. We'll take the information, like I said, we compile it, and now we'll wait for the next step, which will come from the governor. If it goes to the next level, they'll be on Dearborn Heights Cable or our website, or naturally, I'm sure we'll hear it on local TV, 247, whatever. So the county told us, it might not be tomorrow, it might not be next week, it could be a month. So like I said, up to the governor and the state police and emergency management as to the next level, where they'll go.
Okay, thank you.
Can you repeat that?
Thank you.
Repeat that email address again, or website, excuse me?
Yeah, so it'll be 2019flood@dearborn, D-E-A-R-B-O-R-N, hyphen, heights, H-E-I-G-H-T-S, dot m i, dot u s.
Chief, you did a great job as emergency manager.
Thank you.
Chief, for clarification, is it, it's flood2019, right?
Yes. Did I say something?
Flood 2019.
Yeah, so it's flood 2019.
Flood 2019.
At, and then the rest of the Dearborn Heights email, yes.
We'll put, it'll be on the city website.
It's gonna be on the show.
Yeah, it'll be on the show. Lisa did the show, and we'll have it out there.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the chief also. I mean, regardless of what you think, something was getting done all the time, and so my hat goes off to you also.
We try.
Okay. Any further comments from the council table? Then I will take, oh, go ahead, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk.
Real quickly, those of you who are on the permanent absentee list should be seeing these in your mailbox in about 10 days to two weeks. We just sent them to the printer today, so you'll be getting your applications for a absentee ballot. There's always some misinterpretation. We do not automatically send the ballots. People say, I always get one. You have to fill out the application, folks. We have to check your signature, make sure you're still a resident of Dearborn Heights so far and so on. Just a reminder, there's three check boxes at the top, please make sure you check them. You can get a ballot for both elections, August and November, either the August or the November separately. New this time, there's a checkbox, I want to automatically have all future elections and applications sent to me. So you can designate on your application, this year, if you are not on the permanent list, to be put on the permanent AV list. We just sent them to the printer today, and we are hoping for a 10-day to two-week turnaround. One other, this would be an announcement, I guess. One other, this would be an announcement, I guess. Before we meet again in two weeks, we will have Memorial Day on Monday, the 27th, and I just want to remember the, those fallen in battle, those who have passed on, that served us, and those who are still with us, I want to say thank you to all you veterans for all you have done for us. And the annual ceremony will be held at St. Hedok Cemetery on Memorial Day at 10 o'clock for anybody who's interested. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comment from the council table? Okay, at this time, I will take my time to speak. There's been a lot of discussion regarding the April 23, 2019 meeting that I canceled as council chair. In an email I received from Mr. Miyaki, he discusses at length the doctrine of legislative equivalency. As a general rule, a legislative body cannot take a legally inferior action to amend a prior action. That is a true statement as a general rule. Mr. Miyaki, however, incorrectly applies that general rule to the action of me as council chair in canceling the city council meeting of April 23, 2019. I became aware prior to the meeting of April 23, 2019, that a quorum of city council members was unable to attend the meeting. As a result, I provided notice to all interested parties that that meeting would not occur on that date. Under the Michigan Open Meetings Act, being Public Act 267 of 1976, a meeting is defined as the convening of a public body at which quorum is present for the purpose of deliberating towards or rendering a decision on public policy. MCL 15.262B. Since a quorum was not able to attend the meeting on April 23, it was not possible to conduct the meeting. Further, it was not impossible to, it was, would have been impossible to vote on a resolution to cancel the meeting on the 23rd of April since there was not a quorum. What is missing from Mr. Miyaki's analysis in this matter, first, is the state law trumps the city of Dearborn Heights charter. So under the Michigan Home Rule Act, Public Act 279 of 1909, a city charter provision cannot conflict with, contravene the provisions of any general state law of the state. MCL 117-36. Therefore, the charter cannot require a subquorum of council members holding a meeting when the Open Meetings Act defies a meeting as a quorum being present. State law overrides city charter as well as the prior action of the city council to establish a regular schedule of meetings. When it is known in advance that the quorum would not be present, which I knew in advance, such an act would serve no legal purpose, would unnecessarily add expense for taxpayers such as Miyaki being present to be paid and the mayor's outside council attending said meetings, and inconvenience to city leaders who drive considerable distance to attend the meeting. So I felt at this point I needed to explain why I canceled it, I made sure I did it correctly, and like it says, there is a state law that covers that. And also, at this time, Mr. Mayor, as council chair, we did do a superveto tonight for motion 19-141 and 19-125, and I would hope that you would sign it tomorrow. And we also have, I'm going to pass down ordinance H-18-07, that also needs your signature. And I would hope you do the right thing. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it up to public announcements.
Hello, council chair and mayor, just want to talk about a couple of quick programs coming up. This Thursday at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library, we will be having a program on Bulgaria. Join Maria Fogaresi as she talks about the rich culture and vibrant travel destinations of this beautiful and scenic area. Second, Monday, May 20, at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library, we will be having another episode and discussion on senior mental health. Join Susan Duarte Dejean as she delves into the most common mental health challenges facing seniors and present strategies for bolstering resistance. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? This would be in regards to happenings around the community, like the library or Park and Rock, because we do have a section after this for public comment. Are you public?
For residents.
For residents?
Well, I can wait.
Okay. Dr. Hashem?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council chair. I just want to thank the council members that have voted to adopt my budget today and not turning down $1.2 million federal money. Thank you very much. I'd like to also mention that CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, has always had money available for rehab in houses. Their money has been available for the last, if I remember correctly, 30 years, and it's also available this year, and it's available for flood victims. However, there is some qualification that they have to go through. I'd like to leave my phone number for the department, it's 313-791-3500. Please call us at any time, and we'll be more than happy to help out. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other community announcements? Nancy?
Yes. I'm going to add the comment too, that Tom Wensel did a fantastic job on May 4 organizing the Ecorse Creek Cleanup. And he put forth time and effort, used his own truck to help a lot of people out of the water, and I think Tom deserves some applause here.
Thanks, Mary. I had a lot of help, a lot of help.
Yeah, we did.
Can't do it by yourself.
That's true. And I want to announce the next meeting for South Dearborn Heights Civic Association on May 23, a week from Thursday, 7 to 9:00 PM, at our new location, the Ford Bowling Alley, the Ford Lanes on Van Born Road. And we will be having District 7 and Westwood Community School Superintendent's Board Members. And as an added attraction, we have a manager from Home Depot who will tell us how to maintain our plants and our yards and anything to do with gardening at that time. So please come and see us, 7 to 9 on the 23rd.
Do we get a free game of bowling?
They didn't offer that yet. I'm trying to get some plants though, so hang in there.
I can't bowl anymore anyway, so my wife won't let me.
Okay. And do we have any other announcements? This time, I will open it up to public comments. Sir, it's your turn now. You have three minutes, state your name and your address, please.
I'll probably have to abbreviate this. My name is Bruce Kane, I've lived here 35 years, spent most of my career as a healthcare systems analyst, five years in medical research, five years overseeing the operating rooms and satellites, one of the most prestigious hospitals, medical institutes of this nation, really. I'm here to discuss fifth-generation internet and smart meters. The really two problems with 5G, fifth-generation internet and smart meters, privacy and health. I'm part of a global movement to stop the deployment of 5G antennas and smart meters. So today, I'm here to do what I'm encouraging activists around the planet to do, to request that city governments convene public study sessions to alert the communities about the dangers of these technologies to our health and privacy. So I'm basically here tonight to ask the council to take a vote, to convene a public study session on both fifth-generation internet and smart meters that are going to harm our children. I also think the council should promote this in a way that our citizens will be encouraged to attend. It is important that they understand what is basically being forced down our throats by President Trump and the telecoms like AT&amp;T and Verizon, without any regard for the health, privacy, or safety of our citizens or children. This is an existential problem for humanity. I cannot understate this. I'm going to abbreviate my comments because I can't cover even this in five minutes. But let's look at this three ways. Let's look at the health concerns, let's look at the privacy concerns, and let's look at the things that are different between 4G, what you have now with your smartphones, and what they're going to be shoving down your throats with 5G. As far as the health concerns, there have been many studies done that are showing that this technology is going to cause alterations of heart rhythm, altered gene expression, altered metabolism, altered stem cell development, cancer, cardiovascular disease, or many more, I don't have that much time. Now let me describe the privacy concerns. Over the last 10 years, there have been a global deployment of smart meters that unlike the previous analog meters, emit harmful EMF radiation and dirty electricity. A similar global deployment of 5G antennas is now underway. What most of you don't understand is these smart meters, even what you've got now, are surveilling everything you do in your home, and that information is then sold to third parties, including the police and the National Security Agency. And DT is profiting from selling this information. So every time you turn on electrical appliance, DT, and goodness who knows it would be, knows what you are doing in real time in your home. They know when you are in your home.
Thank you, sir, your three minutes is up.
They know when you blow dry your hair. So I, okay, I'll finish up. I am asking for a vote. I want a special study session, I want this community to understand what this government is trying to do to us. It is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kane, thank you. We've been receiving your emails and reading them and have been responding. I appreciate it because I know I've talked to many people and researched as well. What I'd like to say, Madam Chair?
We're running real late.
I know it is late.
Respectful to our residents.
So I would like us to have a study session, please.
We can do that.
And I think you just need two or more council members to support that. Do we have concurrence?
I support it.
Very good, thank you.
Could I just briefly say, I've talked to Colbeck, who's a past state senator with a lot of background in medical. He testified before the state. I've talked to Paul, who's an emeritus professor at Washington State University who's been testifying about this. This is a problem for every human on this planet.
Right, and that's why we're going to have the study session, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I've got to go, but thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And God bless you for tolerating all my emails.
Okay, thanks.
You guys have a good night.
We love you too. Okay. Name, address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Cindy Berry. I live at 24091 Hanover Street. I'm back again. The flood. So I lost everything, more cars, everything in my house, forest floor, basement. So the gentleman that was up there in the blue shirt basically kind of helped me on where to go, thank you very much, because I wasn't getting no guidance from anywhere.
That was Lee Gavin, by the way.
That was Lee Gavin.
Lee Gavin, thank you. Today was actually my first day cleaning my house since the flood. I had no help. My husband's been out of town for work, my boys have been working, and it's been really chaotic. So I've been staying in a hotel, I had to transfer to three times to different hotels with my kids, and now we're at a smaller place because my insurance was limited on what they gave me this time for our housing needs. So hopefully it would go to FEMA, state police can help me, I don't know what to do anymore. But I mean, I can't go through this again. My back is breaking, and I'm so tired. So, thank you. Hopefully I can get some more information from your information, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Name, address, and three minutes, please.
Jerry Miyaki, Plainfield Street.
Council Miyaki, are you as a resident speaking or as corporate counsel?
I don't, actually, I would say I'm doing it as corporate counsel, but if I have to do it as a resident.
And you're charging us for it?
No, I haven't been charging you for these times of two minutes at a time, and I haven't been charging for a lot of other time that I've ended up spending as well. So that being said, may I start my three minutes?
Yep.
Thank you. I wasn't intending to speak today, but council chair, you did mention some things, and I believe they need to be corrected. The Open Meetings Act does not authorize you to cancel meetings. It doesn't actually specify anything with respect to that. It does, however, require an annual schedule of meetings, just like city charter section 6.4, and that was set by an act of this body and could only be changed by an act of this body. And that was what my point is. So I stand by my opinion, and with respect to a lack of quorum, the lack of quorum is dealt with under the city charter. And essentially, what it says is you still convene the meeting, but then, if you don't have a quorum, at that point, the only business you can entertain is to adjourn the meeting. But you do not prospectively cancel a meeting, and you certainly do not prospectively cancel a meeting except by a vote of the city council.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Name, address, and you have three minutes.
Rose Tripeppy, Tulane Street. I apologize, I should have been here in February, but I was in Florida to be embarrassed by the city. They tell me that, what the heck is going on? Don't you live in Dearborn Heights? They're suing the mayor, they have to have an audit, somebody stole money. I said, I live in Detroit, I don't know anything about Dearborn Heights. I was embarrassed. With that, we're talking about people needing money for this? Use that money that you're going to blow on all these other things, give it to these people that have been flooded. Save the money, save them. All this other crap you guys want, and it's not a political thing, is what I was told? Well then, why is it 16 years? Why isn't it five, 10, 15 years? Why is it 16? If it's not political, it wouldn't be that way. I want to commend you for holding everything in order. I like the way you're holding it. But people that talk in the back, I know are obstructing you, but you guys are obstructing up here with your papers, your water, and your whispering. It's ridiculous. And I want to thank Mr. Lee Gavin, and Mr. Hadad, and Jack, they worked their fannies off in that flood thing. And the mayor was not, like some residents said, taking breaks, he was there with us, working right along with everybody else.
Thank you. Name, address, and three minutes.
Ed Jackson.
One more, I'm sorry. I forget Chrissy. Everybody forgets Chrissy. Chrissy was working her ass off that whole time.
Madam Chair.
Ed Jackson, Kingsbury Ste. Actually, I've got two things tonight. I understand we have a new Parks Recreation Director. Kudos to Miss Constance for the hell of a job she's done all this time. My question is, since we have a new director, why is this lady presenting the bids, requests everything here as opposed to directors? Because we have a director doing her job that she's not getting paid for? That doesn't make any sense to me. You want directors up here? I'd suggest the council have the director come here, at least get filled in so he can fill in the information. Not attacking anybody, just, you are getting paid for that job, I'd like to see that presented to all of us out here. Second thing, as a member of our veterans, veterans in the city, I wonder why that statue out in front has been this messed up for so long? Everybody in this building, any of the citizen that walks up to City Hall sees that monument in such disrepair, it's disrespectful, it's shameful, it shouldn't have to have my coming up here, anybody else. This should have been addressed when it happened. Memorial is coming up, it's a disservice and disrespectful to our veterans in this committee.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, I agree with that.
Yes, I agree with that too, it's been that way for a while.
We've been in contact with the past commander at Donovan Post and the arrangement with the, and it's very hurtful that people are stealing the rifle and the helmet things, is that part of the, they come and service it, and they have been contacted, and they're telling us they will come back, but it's hurtful when you see the destruction of that monument.
I have a question, God, why do we have cameras there? We have cameras in the city office, you know, we get it.
We do have some cameras, but... So you're talking about the Joshua Brown?
Yes, sir. The statue down, the boots on it.
Madam Chair.
Council Chair?
Yes.
If I could address real quick, before DPW Director Zimmer retired, he made contact with the company that supplied that. They're going to be out hopefully by the end of May. They had to remake it, and it's been on order. We've been in contact, like the mayor said. So Mr. Zimmer ordered that before he retired, so they told us sometime in May they would have it done. So we're awaiting them.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Name, address, and three minutes, please.
Okay. Name and three minutes, please. My name is Ray Shoah, I'm from Westland, Michigan, 7100 Park Crest. Well, I know Lisa. Well, let's talk about mental health, okay? Let's make it an awareness month. Talk a little bit about myself, okay? it an awareness month. Talk a little bit about myself. Okay, I have, where, I have a disability concern board in Westland, which is reaching out in the community, but people have all sorts of different abilities. People sometimes don't understand that other people should be in the, out there like anybody else, driving a car, working, and that's exactly what I do. Yesterday, I was at the Redford Library, and what that is, I'm an ambassador. And what that is, mental health is, the authority goes out to the police departments, reaching out to people in the community. What I tell people, anyone in this room, it could be their son, their daughters, in that situation, to understand about mental health is to have a better understanding about it. It's not, it's not where people say, "Oh, let's ignore them." No. It's a hidden stigma. People sometimes need help. And sometimes the police departments don't know where to, some of them are trained. Some of them need more training. Which land is trained with mental health? And what that is, is what say a resource book. You know, sometimes people don't know where to go, and the police department can help out in that. Insurance companies can help out. City halls, I'm telling you, it's getting everywhere. And it's very important. I want to see people driven. And you, I'm out here driving the cities. I'm going to different city council meetings. And this is my life, and I'm going to keep educating. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public announcements? Crozier Riley.
Yep. Earlier in the meeting, it was a list of checks that were written to various entertainment places. I think, you know, there's backup for all of those checks that are written, and I would say that the majority of those are in the Recreation Department for senior citizen trips. They're often paid for by the senior citizens themselves, and it's just run through the city. So the revenue would come in, the expense would go out for the seniors to attend various events throughout the state or even other states for whatever it may be. But the backup is available for anybody who'd like to take a look at that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Go ahead.
My name is Stephanie Butler, and I, my in-laws live on Merrick, so I'm a resident in Dearborn. I am here because this flood directly affected me, because I share custody of my son, who stays part-time on Merrick. Since the flood, my son has had runny noses, allergies, can't breathe, bloody noses in the middle of the night. I just want to know whose houses are being knocked, the doors, from the police, because nobody that I know on the south end that lives there are getting help. My in-laws got a bag of groceries, canned goods specifically. They also were given a voucher, a voucher. They lost everything, Christmas toy, everything of my son's. Two articles of clothing per resident living in the home from the Salvation Army. Two articles of clothing. I lost, I mean, we lost thousands, okay? More importantly, my son's health. A bucket was dropped off to a 75-year-old lady across the street with 10 sponges in it. The lady can't even get down the stairs. So I just want to know, whose houses are we knocking on? How are we compiling these lists? What help are these people getting who have lost everything? And just so you know, the vouchers for the clothing, not that she would have used them, she appreciates it. They didn't even contact her back. So I just want to know, like, what are we doing to help? What are we doing for the kids, the sickness, anybody?
Um, again, would you like to meet with her after the meeting?
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
Yeah, it kind of saved time, because we're getting so late. Thank you so much. Any other public comment? Go ahead, please. Two minutes, I mean, three minutes, and your name.
Dana Parrish, 5614 Greenwich Park. And one thing really kind of hit me with this, with the flood and the water and the, we keep going back to, where's the money coming, the overtime, where's the money coming from? Well, it's coming from the Water Department again. Seems like every time we look over our shoulder, money's coming out of the Water Department for something. You know, the city budget's fine. The city budget's doing great. The numbers are great. We've got a surplus. But every time we turn over our shoulder and look, our water rates are going up. They're already the highest around, but the water rates are going up again, because we don't have a choice. I don't have a choice. I have to turn on the water. I have to drink water. I have to take a shower. Well, I guess I don't have to, but you wouldn't want to be around me. So we have to use water. So we don't have any control over those. But the city budget's doing great. We're in a surplus. We can give people raises again, because the city budget's great. What's going on here? As far as the laws, these are ordinances. People call them, you call them ordinances, you call them resolutions. They're laws. You pass a law, your legislative law here, your legislative body, you pass a law here. It has to be followed. There's no wiggle room here. If you don't, if I don't follow a law that you folks pass, guess what? That man over there with the badge and the gun throws my ass in jail. That's his job, and I expect that he does it, because I used to wear his uniform, and I used to do the same thing. The laws that you pass here are the same ones the state and the federal government passes. There's no excuse not to pass those laws. So if you don't want to mark the cars, you don't mark them? That's ridiculous. You have to. This legislative body says you do it, you do it. Where's the question here? You have to do it. The chief is told he has to do something by this body, he has to do it. He knows he has to do it. I don't understand what, where the problems are here.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Marion Johnston. My family immigrated from Scotland to Dearborn Heights many years ago. I went to Haston, I'm sorry, I went to Highview, then Haston, graduated from Crestwood. Life happened. A year ago, we moved back. We're in Dearborn Heights again. I'm kind of sad to see city government the way it is, and I really, really hope that it gets better in the near future. I want to say hi to everybody. I've responded to many of you on Facebook. And let's work together and make the city better. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, okay, sir?
And I did get a message from you. I did give you permission to go more-
Appreciate it. I'm going to cut it short, because I know it's getting too late.
Yes.
I'm going to refer to the May 7 meeting, that I emailed to you guys what happened during that meeting. Unfortunately, I've heard from the most of you guys, but from the people I requested an apology from, which is the mayor and his secretary, I didn't hear nothing. So I'm demanding an apology for the verbal abuse that have happened on May 7, and from the action that they took. My understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, while we're out in the council meeting, you as the mem of chair is the only one who's authorized to call the police, stop somebody, escort somebody out of the room, or even cut somebody out.
Correct. That's the city council meeting.
Unfortunately, it's been happening several times, and it did happen back on May 7, where the mayor's secretary decides to call the police on me. Why? Because I'm using my freedom of speech. My question, I'm going to ask you this question, I will hope the chief could answer you that. Since they know the law and their law enforcement, how are they responding to their call and coming to the city hall without your permission? Aren't we paying for these law enforcement to do their jobs? Or they're just like security company? Do you have an answer for me, chief?
Chief, would you like to answer that?
I was responding to you. What's the question?
There was, um-
There was an incident back on May 7 during a council meeting, and that's been happening repeatedly, like, several times, where the mayor's secretary calls the Dearborn Heights Police Department. They send in his officers to the city hall. According to the law, since the chief of police, he should know, anytime the cops got to be called into the city during council meeting, they have to come in from Denise, and only her.
Well, that's incorrect. The officers aren't here as part of their duty to maintain-
The officer were not in the building. They were called in by phone.
Which officer?
I'm sorry?
Which officers? I have no idea what officers you're talking about.
May I, actually-
We have the officers' names.
It actually happened on two occasions, chief. There was the deputy, the, sorry.
Deputy Director Constance.
Deputy Director Constance. When she was speaking up here about a month or so back, the mayor's assistant actually went-
Chrissy Laszlo.
Chrissy Laszlo. She made, she, we can hear her from up here. She said, "I'm going to call the police," and she did. You're going to have her arrested. I mean, she did call the police. The police was here within, like, minutes. And the same incident that happened with, or he's talking about May 7.
Yes.
We can hear Ms. Laszlo actually use the four-letter word, you know, to shut the, you know, F up. "I'm going to call the police and have you arrested." And even the mayor says, "Yeah, get them out of here." It's on tape, actually. You can see it on tape, May 7. So what gives, you know, if the council chair, you know, calls to order, what gives somebody else an authority in the crowd to say, you know, they're going to call the police and have somebody arrested while they're voicing their opinion?
Well, that never happened. He was never arrested for voicing his opinion.
No, sir.
The council meeting was over, correct?
But the police did show up.
No, it was not over. It was not ended.
I called the police to be here as part of my duty to provide security to this building while the council's in session. So I'm the one that calls the officers to come here.
Right, I know-
And they're scheduled to come here, and I remind them to come here. And since the study sessions are becoming more vocal, we need the officers here as security.
Yeah.
And that's their job.
We just want to make sure-
Provide everybody's security here.
We just want to clarify who has authority to decide who should be removed from this official city council meeting when it's still in order. It was not ended at that point.
Yes, well-
No, it was not.
He was never escorted out of the building.
It was, she, first of all, neither, just hold on, hold on. She cannot authorize me to be escorted out of the building, neither the officers. It has to be ordered by the mem of chair for me to be escorted out of the building. Neither the officer can approach me and talk to me without her permission.
No, the officer can approach and talk to you anytime he wants to.
Unless she asks to.
But, if you are becoming disorder-
I don't want to have the argument. It's already 11 o'clock. Everybody's tired.
I don't want you to go away misinformed. I would prefer if our city attorney could address some issues with, if he sees anything-
If the council chair wants me to, I'd be glad to.
The issue is, we tried to talk and schedule something so we could arrange security sessions in here. We were supposed to maybe have a study session. We never did. You requested that we-
I requested you to provide sergeantate arms as outlined in policies and procedures.
So there's issues that, yeah, and we never had that study session.
There shouldn't be a study session.
Well, there needs to be-
It's outlined in policies and procedures.
But there are procedures that need to be followed so that we are in accordance with the laws of the state of Michigan and the federal government.
Mm-hmm. And this is free speech when I give them the three minutes. They are allowed to say what they want, within reason, if not, you know, not to attack anybody.
Nobody has ever been removed from the podium or from the building. Nobody. Nobody.
Okay, and as far as the mayor, do you have an answer from you?
There is a threat.
Do you not apologize for your verbal harassment or for the action you took?
I think, okay, excuse me, I think the most, the main concern is the threat to have him arrested, and it's made twice. One to the Deputy Director Constance, and the second time was to the gentleman.
Sam up here.
I mean, we heard it up here. I can hear both times. I mean, she did make a threat that she's going to have the Deputy Director arrested.
And the police did respond, because Councilman Wensel ran into him outside, and they said they were looking for her.
Looking for who?
They said that they were called an irate citizen. These are officers that were called in addition to the officers that are here during the meeting. There were two additional officers that were called. That was on, about the-
On what night?
It was when Kim Constance was having a verbal debate with the-
It was a budget hearing. It was the budget hearing.
Tuesday, it would have been a Tuesday.
Not this Tuesday, no. It was Tuesday.
No, it was a Tuesday before.
It was a Tuesday.
Yeah.
It was a Tuesday before the 7th. I don't know if it's the 31st or the 30th of the month. It was, um-
It was the night of a budget hearing.
It was a budget hearing.
And I called at, it was early in the day, before the meeting started, to have officers respond here.
Yeah, they were in here, but we're talking added officers that came here in an actual city of Dearborn Heights police car.
Pull the 911 tapes. Pull the tapes from the- Well, no, that's the dispatch.
Well, not when you called the desk sergeant.
It was still showing. All the lines reported.
Okay.
And as far as the mayor, what's your answer, mayor? Do you want to apologize?
No.
Do you want to apologize for the verbal harassment, the action you took on May 7 of 2019?
I don't recall. You said you sent me an email?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Everybody got it.
We did not, we did not receive any emails for a week. Am I correct? Consequently, it's probably loaded in, like, I got eight, nine thousand emails, and it's taking some time to get through it. So I'll read it eventually, but we received no emails for most of all of last week.
It's quite a bit funny, every time somebody emails you, your excuses either.
No, did you get emails, city clerk? We were, we were not getting any emails for the whole week. And that was very troubling, because we were undergoing a massive disaster with the flood.
Okay, at this point, we have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton who would like to say-
Thank you. I'll be very brief. What concerns me, and yes, I received your email and responded, what concerns me, there's an underlying issue, all due respect. This is not the first time we've heard of verbal assault or accosted by the same person, the same individual. It's happened to other residents who have shared this with us. It's happened December 13, 2016, to another council member. That person, I watched be carried into a closet over there in the hall, just to get that person to calm down. And I will tell you, it happened to me as recent as April. Now, every time, we're filing police reports, but what's happening? It continues to happen. Mr. Merrick needs to be addressed. These are our residents, our constituents, our taxpayers. This is why we're here. We exist to serve you. That's why I ran, you know, in 2011 for 2012 seat. Why is this continuing to happen? I mean, it's four years that I'm aware of. Why is this individual allowed to continue to do this? And it's documented by police reports and witnesses. It happened to Deputy Director Constance. It happened to this man. It happened to another resident I can name. It happened to two of your council members. And it's really, and there's witnesses. Yes, there are. And I find it really unacceptable. All due respect, sir. I think this is a liability for our city.
Okay. Name, address, and three minutes.
Hi, I'm Kim Constance. I live at 5527 Heather Lane. I see that everyone is chiming in on me. I do want to tell you that I was told directly from my husband, and his words are quote, "Chrissy is going to call the police on you." All I did was come up here and speak and tell the truth. I believe this is supposed to be a safe haven for residents to come to, to tell you, the council people and the mayor, what is wrong, what's happening, you know, the flood information, which is very important, things like that. I felt very threatened. I felt like, I don't feel that it's safe to come up here and speak. And I have a right as a citizen, freedom of speech, all of that, to be able to come up here and not feel the fear of the police. And several people told me, they talked to the policemen, they asked specifically why they were there, and they said they were called because of an unruly female. Well, if coming up here to speak, to tell people how poorly they feel about the way that they've been treated, for no apparent reason, because I've not been given one yet, I believe that you should have the right to speak. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, at this time, do I hear a motion to end our meeting?
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Muscat, Suckin, and by Bazey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting's done.